It's a go for the way your presentation set up.
Okay, did you just run line?
Non-urban renewal.
Okay. I see we're already on. I didn't realize. Welcome, everybody, to the February 12, 2024 Grants Pass City Council Workshop. I know that DJ is online today. Who are we missing? Robin, Dwayne? Okay. Well, let's go ahead and get started. First up, we're changing the order of what you might have on your agenda just a little bit. So we're going to go with the non-urban renewal agency economic development grant program first.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor, council, staff, and other members here. We are going to start with economic development grant programs, just for the flow of today. Let's just get started with that. So in economic development, we have currently four different grant programs. These are the four programs. One's called Light the Storefront and Security Camera. We have a building facade program, a SDC program, and also a business retention and relocation assistance grant, also known as BRAG. So what I'd like to do is just go through each of these and kind of give you the background on the criteria currently, and then I'll explain some of the recommendations that staff are making for changes. So let's just start there with the Light the Storefronts. It has location criteria that's between C to the north and N to the south, and then between Third and Eighth Streets. So it's around our central business district. It's a 50% match up to $1,000. With the camera, security camera element, there is a public safety input required for this one. And the current balance is at $12,500. So this program, we aren't really making any recommendations for change, just a little bit of language in the program. But other than that, it's well-funded for what it is. The building facade program, its purpose is to encourage property owners of commercial buildings to restore their exterior facades. Right now, the location criteria is the central business district and then along Sixth and Seventh from I-5 down to the river. The criteria for this program is a 50% match up to $5,000. Currently, the funding source is the industrial loan fund. And the balance that we have set aside for this right now is just over $1,400, which you can see isn't enough for even a single grant, or I guess it could be for a partial grant. And then the systems development charge grant right now is for retaining businesses through reimbursement of system development charges that are incurred by owner-occupied businesses that are needing some assistance with either relocation or expansion. The location criteria in this is within the urban growth boundary of the city, so it covers all the city. It's a 50% match up to $25,000. It was originally capitalized with CBD funds, as well as state and other grant funds, and general fund as well at different times. For this last fiscal year and this fiscal year of '23 and '24, there were no new URA monies allocated for this project. You can see its current funding source is LB6381, and the current balance there is $176,000. Now, BRAG, our business retention program, is quite similar as far as criteria to the SDC. It's to retain businesses with the reimbursement of public infrastructure costs that are incurred by the same people, owner-occupied businesses, that are needing to relocate or expand. In this case, it's a 50% match up to $50,000. It was originally capitalized with $400,000 of URA funds. Again, no new URA monies were allocated in FY '23 or '24. The funding source is LB6394. Current balance is $80,000. So that's all the basic information about our current programs. This next slide is just to help you understand where our businesses are located. Yes, Brian?
I'm sorry. I just, I know we're going to be covering a lot today here, and I just want to make sure we don't get, like, too far ahead. I just wanted to clarify, all those programs you just covered, those are economic development programs that are available across the entire city?
Not all of them. So the SDC program right now is, and so is the BRAG, the Business Retention and Relocation. So business retention, system development charge. Building facade currently is within the central business district and then along Seventh and Sixth from I-5 to the river. So that's the location criteria for building facade. Currently, the location criteria for Light the Storefront is C Street to the north, N Street to the south, and then Third and Eighth Streets on either side. So it's central business district, a little bit addition to that.
Okay, so the building facade is essentially all urban renewal district, just by nature of the area?
Yes.
And the Light the Storefront Security Camera, is that strictly URA or?
Currently, it does fall within the URA, yes.
Okay.
It's not a URA grant currently. It's an ED grant.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
But the criteria does fall within our urban growth, or urban renewal boundary.
Okay.
Does that make sense? I know it can be confusing. That's part of what our recommendations are going to show here as we move forward.
Okay, thank you. I think I'm good for now.
Okay.
Rick has a question.
So Dana, when you have specific criteria, and of course, if they qualify, they're eligible for that specific amount with a maximum. Is there, also, are you given the latitude to give a lesser amount, or is it always?
Yes, yes. So the maximum is if they were to meet the criteria and request that full amount of funding, and they could get up to $50,000 for BRAG or $25,000 for SDCs.
But even if the money is in the fund and available, can, let's say, the amount is whether it's $1,000 or $50,000. If they met the criteria and they're asking for the full amount, can you say, no, we're not going to give you the full amount, or are we locked in?
Well, at this point, it comes to the council to make that decision. So as far as, so we could bring that to the council to decide if they would want to fund it fully or not.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to add to it. Currently, it's a 50% match, right? So basically, that's why a lot of them don't go up to the full amount, is because it is a 50% match, and we give them half of what they ask for. I don't think any of them have come up to the full 50K as of yet.
Yeah, I'm not certain, but I think you're right. A lot of them don't come up to that full amount, because in that case, they would have to spend $100,000 to get reimbursed 50. So, yes. Hopefully, are we, good? Okay.
So is this appropriate timing? Or would it be better to go into the intricacies of the $50,000 at the end of your presentation?
Sure, yeah. If you want to give me a minute, I'll give you a few ideas on our recommendations, and maybe that'll answer some of your questions. And if not, I'm definitely up to see if I can answer questions. So we've reviewed what those are. Like, again, we just left off where a reminder that nearly half of our businesses are outside of the urban renewal, and the other half are inside. So with that understanding, some of the recommendations that staff are making for modifications to these programs, I've broken down here. The building facade program, we're looking at criteria that would be outside the URA, but also, but still within the city limits. So that would be a location criteria modification. We're looking at the possibility of shifting this to a competitive application process, partially because we know that the funding source is limited. As I mentioned, the funding source is the industrial loan fund. So our recommendations would be to potentially use the interest off of the industrial loan funds to fund this program rather than dig into the principal amount. And then for SDCs and the BRAG program, these two, the criteria are very similar. So we're looking at the possibility of combining these programs into one. We would modify that location criteria to be outside of the urban renewal, but also, you know, within the city limits. Remove some of the restrictive language. So within those programs, there is this term of unforeseen reasons that are pretty subjective and are restrictive for these programs right now. And then, like I mentioned, consolidate those programs so that you would focus on having a $50,000 match, where it would all fall under the BRAG program in this case, but you could still get up to $25,000 of SDC reimbursement. Right now, SDCs are a piece of criteria underneath BRAG that you can access. So it would just be continuing to keep that piece of criteria, but max what somebody could reimburse for SDCs as $25,000.
What does competitive application process mean?
We would model it similar to our sustainable tourism grants. We would have an annual application that opens up for a period of time. It would close. Rather than it being a running application, we would just do it once a year. Because of that limited funding on the building facade, we won't always have a lot of money available. So it would be nice to know in advance, this is how much is available, announce that to the public, allow people to compete to receive those funds, and then the next year, do the same thing.
So when you say compete, is that first come, first served, or is that, is there some board that oversees it and decides merit? How does that work?
Yeah, we would have a grant review committee, similar to the sustainable tourism grant. So looking at these programs, just the cost implications, I've discussed these a little bit already. But with the industrial loan fund, the current balance is at $523,000. So if we were to set a minimum balance of $500,000 for that, we could then work off of the interest each year to continue to administer this program. Let's see, estimate. And again, we could assess annually what those funds would be and then have that available. For the SDC and BRAG, you can see the balances. If we were to consolidate those under BRAG, it would come out to $256,000 in the current balance. We could, again, set the max for the SDCs to be $25,000 underneath that $50,000 umbrella, and it would all just be administered under that program. And we could look at, over time, either sunsetting those grants as the funds are depleted, or we could reevaluate over time and see if we can find a more sustainable funding source. So that all said, the policy question here is, does the council support the staff-recommended changes to the ED grant programs? And some of it might be better answered after understanding our recommendations for the urban renewal grant program, but I'm open to questions.
Yeah, I have a question on the, like, the industrial loan balance, because that was money that was years ago, if I'm not mistaken, through CDBG given to us. We never used it. It became open. If I'm not mistaken, during the pandemic, that's what we used when we helped businesses. Am I correct?
Yes.
I think it started like at $700,000 at one point in time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Even up to, it was $900,000 at one point. It was a large chunk of money that then these other programs were administered out of there.
Okay. And like I said, that's also what we gave when we helped the businesses out during the pandemic. Okay, that just kind of clarifies that that's what the fund that we're talking about. So currently, it has a $523,000. And so you're saying the interest on that would keep it going, is what you're saying? And so we could just open it up once a year to people who applied competitively, and for that year, we'd know an idea of what that interest would be, and then keep it going on an annual basis? And the other one, I'm assuming, the SDC and BRAG, being non-urban renewal and not being able to use urban renewal funds, would just consolidate and basically end the program unless we decided something others. I just wanted to get clarity. So that's what we're saying?
Yes.
Because they are not in the urban renewal area, so we can therefore not necessarily replenish it through URA funds?
Correct, yes.
Thank you. Okay.
And I might mention as well, the $500,000 minimum that we are recommending could then still be available in the case that we did have, let's say, an industrial project come along, and we wanted to put those funds towards that. We could keep that amount. That's why we would keep at least some set amount available and then administer the program off of whatever's made an interest.
Okay, thank you.
Rick?
Dana, there was a development out on Rogue River Highway by Jim's Jessing House, and apparently, he was looking and thought he was eligible for one of these grants. Would that have been the SDC or the BRAG?
They had applied for the SDC. They likely still wouldn't qualify, because it is still focused on owner-occupied businesses. And in that case, that wasn't the case for that particular request. So there are still other criteria that they'd have to meet.
The requirement of owner-occupied, that's specific language that we came up with, or is that a federal or a state?
As far as I know, that's just the language that we have in our current programs.
Okay.
The focus is specific.
And what is the definition for owner-occupied? Do they have to live on the site? Or can they, as long as the owner, I want to say, what would?
Yeah, as long as the owner is there operating, and I think is the idea. And I guess that's part of, you know, interpreting criteria for grants. But I think it would be, it's an owner-occupied business, owner-occupied means that they are involved. It's not an outside person that has come in and is not operating the business here.
So the spirit, and taking a look back at when that was created, seven years ago, or five years ago, or something like that, the spirit of that was to try to address and have language in there where the grant dollars would be focused on a single-source, small-business owners, and where they are owner-occupied. And the owner-occupied aspect goes to where the monies were to go to help a single owner-occupied brick-and-mortar store of some, or of some sort of business, and not to go for things like a shopping mall where someone could maybe get that grant. It's not owner-occupied. It's got, you know, seven different businesses within it, that kind of thing. But it was meant to be focused on small, independent, I don't believe it's even non-franchised, business owner-occupied.
So on this one, for Jessing House, it disqualified itself because?
Yeah, the Jessing House, if I recall which program you're talking about, that is a mobile home or a trailer park of some sort.
True.
And that is, doesn't follow along the same lines of the spirit of the BRAG grant, which was to take a business that was needing to move, relocate, grow, or expand their business that is owner-occupied. I would think that a mobile home park or trailer park would be similar to a shopping mall or something along those lines, where they may have a caretaker place, but they've got 12 or 25 different places that are renting that are not owner-occupied. And so it doesn't comply with the technical term, I think, of owner-occupied or in alignment with the original spirit of the language of why that was adopted.
Okay, thank you.
Brian?
Yeah, thank you. I just had a few clarifying questions. So starting with the lighting the storefront security camera program, it looks like the balance in there was like about $12,000. And the source for that is, is that an urban renewal source, or is that some other funding source for that particular grant?
I'm sorry, was that building facade? Was that the question?
That was the Light the Storefront slash Security Camera Grant Program.
Yeah, so the source of that has also been the industrial loan fund.
Okay, so money was carved out of there, because it says there's only $12,000 for that, so I guess it's like a sub account?
Kind of a sub, yeah.
Okay. Okay. I was reading the program description for the building facade grant. And, I mean, I think it looks, I think it looks really good. I was just thinking that, you know, I think the maximum's $5,000 for that particular grant. So, you know, not a huge grant, but definitely enough to get some things done. One of the things that is eligible is professional design services, which I think is appropriate. Is that, could someone, in theory, use the entire $5,000 grant for the design services? Or is that? I would assume that they, that they can. Is that right?
You know, that's something I don't know, when it was originally designed, if there wasn't necessarily a max set on that. So if that's something that you would recommend we could do, that we could set a max on the design services?
Okay. Okay, I think I'm okay for now. Thanks.
Joel?
Well, thank you for your recommendations, and for the most part, I think they're pretty sound. I wondered, how can we spend urban renewal dollars outside the urban renewal district?
In this case, where these aren't funds that are urban renewal dollars. That's part of the reason why we're making the recommendation that we change location criteria. So in a case, following this, I'm going to talk a little bit about our recommendations for an urban renewal grant and loan program. If we have funds within the urban renewal for those, these programs could then be focused outside of the urban renewal.
So on the BRAG, then, it was originally capitalized with $400,000 from the URA. There must have been some other capitalization in there, because the recommendation is for BRAG to add property outside the URA. So there must have been some other capital funds in there as well?
I guess, I think so.
Okay. It was, you know, I just, it wasn't clear. And those funds were what, general fund or?
I think probably, you know, that's a good question. I might look to Brad to see if he knows more.
And how many of those funds are left, I wondered?
For BRAG specifically?
Yeah.
Right now, $80,000 is remaining on BRAG.
So were those all urban renewal dollars, or we don't know?
That I don't know.
So for the LB6394, which is the BRAG, you're right, counselor, it is for FY '24, all 100% of the resource allocation did come from the URA. But prior to FY '24, there was some non-urban renewal funds in there. So the balance, and that's where Dana and I were talking about, well, how can we, you know, leverage some other opportunities for, since more than, about half of our businesses in Grants Pass are outside the URA? What are some of those opportunities? So it's dwindling fast, and it has since the beginning. You know, it's never had a sustainable source of resources to it. So I think that's really one of the main reasons we wanted to bring this to you, to let you know, you know, these are going to sunset pretty soon.
Sure. So then, we do have safeguards in place, so we're not spending URA dollars outside the URA?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Joel, Rob?
So I'm sorry I missed the very beginning of this, and maybe you've covered it already. But if not, so are all these different programs, would they be essentially rolled into one? They'd be competing against each other potentially? This is going to be one pot of money? Or they're still going to remain separate as far as competitive applications go?
What we're recommending right now is that we would have basically three separate programs. We'd have the Light the Storefronts, which remains the same. The Business Facade, which would go to more of a competitive model because of its limited funding, and then a consolidation of the SDC and BRAG.
Okay. Yeah, the reason I ask is I really looked at the Light the Storefront Security Camera kind of in a different light as the other ones, because it really is a public safety issue, and it's really a necessity for safe neighborhoods, and it really benefits the surrounding neighbors as well. You know, if there's some kind of crime, then, you know, security cameras benefit everybody. So I look at that as being really different than these others, but thank you.
Brian?
I'm sorry, I just have one more. On the SDC and BRAG combination, so the balance is, between the two, is $256,000 right now?
Yes.
And the, under this, under the way we would be doing it, the maximum one applicant could receive would be 50K or 75?
50. The maximum for the whole program would be $50,000. And within that, we would only max out the SDC element at 25, if that makes sense. So someone could come, and they could get some support with SDCs and then some other, you know, projects related to public infrastructure. But we would still max the SDCs within that $50,000, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so in theory, that fund could be depleted by five projects?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions right now?
Any other questions? Okay. Well, this will kind of lead us into our urban renewal grant and loan program discussion. In the recommendations that we provided in your handouts there, we're looking at a single program in this case, incentive program that would serve four of the 17 URA project areas. We did separate out the housing element, and we'll discuss that a little bit further as we go along here. But...
Sorry to interrupt, but I'm kind of thinking maybe we should have discussion about that piece, because this is almost like a totally different topic that we're about to get into, and it could get really confusing if we try to go into discussion and it's all happening at once. So just wanted to throw that out there.
Do you guys want to discuss right now? I had flagged that question to come back to. Could go either way. Valerie?
Well, personally, I would basically probably go on their recommendations, because I don't feel there's anything other than that, unless somebody else brings something out. So it doesn't matter to me either way. But it may further confuse the issuer, may change my mind, so I don't know. It's just like, you know, I don't know what you would recommend, if it will change. I mean, I think basically, if I'm not mistaken, what you're trying to do is have a URA-focused and a non-URA-focused. And a lot of the non-URA money is utilizing the interest from the industrial loan moving forward. And then the other parts will just kind of sunset, because there's no money in there, unless some point in time down the road, we decided to dig into that $500,000, because there was some sort of industrial project that we felt was going. Am I correct?
Yes.
So to me, it makes sense to do that and have the two separate. So if you want, have something you want to add to that or question that?
I mean, I just had one quick comment, or maybe a suggestion on this particular one that I just asked about, where the fund could essentially be depleted by five projects. Because of that, I might be inclined to have lower thresholds for the maximum amount, so the fund lasts longer and can serve more businesses. So instead of it being 50,000, I don't know, some amount less, just so it, you know, isn't depleted in two years. That was really the only comment I wanted to make.
Anybody else have a thought on that?
On the other side, with as much as everything costs, sometimes if they don't have a grant to help along with the cost, it doesn't happen anyway, so it's kind of like half one or the other, personally.
Everybody's deep in thought. We'll jump back to that later. How about?
Okay. So just looking at an urban renewal grant and loan program, this is one we theoretically will have funds that we could infuse into this program. We would look at a single program covering four of the different projects within the URA. As I mentioned, the housing element we'll discuss in a bit. But overall, if you're just looking at the general guidelines, this program that you can see in your handout provides general rules that would be covering all of the URA grants and loans. Those general rules include the location criteria, the subject property and applicant requirements, the general funding rules, which in this case, we set a match for public infrastructure projects to be 50/50, and for privately-owned infrastructure projects to be 25/75. And then those general rules also cover eligibility and ineligibility. Then within that program, there would also be project-specific guidelines for the four projects. And you've seen these four projects several different times, the North Sixth and Seventh Street corridor, lighted building and removal, building rehab, and the underutilized land. Just generally speaking, the maximums on those that are set in the guidelines that we've shared with you are $50,000 on grants and $100,000 on... are 50,000 on grants and 150,000 on loans. They could be varying though, under each specific project. The guidelines also provide an application and approval process. In this case, we are looking at the first come, first served model. Another return we've used is open season. And then we would also have an urban renewal project review committee that would help with approval. So something that came up at the previous workshop back in October, we were talking at a higher level about loans. We did make a few recommendations on maxes, a maximum loan in the guidelines. But we did want to bring this back to you after we've done a little more research and give you more information. So when we're looking at loans under URA, there's different models we can use. We could look at the revolving loan, that was one that's been suggested. And the way that a revolving loan is modeled is the prime rate plus a percentage. And in this case, you would, it would be a loan style that would be more to benefit the city. It, it costs a little bit more in order to account for that time value of money and then also for those funds to go back to then be reutilized. There's also a subsidized loan model you could use. This is when we're talking about low-interest loans, or even zero interest. Using prime minus a certain percentage, it's favorable to the community, but in the, in the URA ends up paying those extra costs. So that's what, if you were to use a subsidized model, you could provide a low-interest rate. You could pay for administrative fees, that's something that could either be paid by the URA or the borrower. Or you could also look at a forgivable loan as an option. I always just, I just made a note that forgivable loans, that's, you could write off a portion of the balance if certain criteria or milestones were met. And then another thing to consider with loans are just the financial risk factors when it comes to housing, if we're looking at the housing projects. Typically, those are covered by conventional lenders. And when we spoke with third-party lenders, they really look at it as a little bit higher risk, similar to a business startup or something like that when it comes to financing housing with loans. So those are some things to take into consideration. When we did, this is a little bit more detail about a third-party management and what that looks like. I'm just using an example here of CCD Business Development. They're out of Roseburg and our surrounding region. They serve our surrounding region. In their program, they actually do have a revolving loan program. They max at 250,000 on what they'll lend. And then they gave us an idea of what that looks like. So they charge a 2% administrative fee, and then it's a 10% interest that the borrower's paying. And actually, in their case, they get all of the administrative fees from the borrower as well. They did talk about an administrative loan, or I'm sorry, a subsidized loan, that, and what that might look like. They don't currently do that, but they, they would do something like that if, if we needed it. They said that would look like maybe a 3% to 6% fee. But they also suggested that you could just offer that within your revolving loan program, project by project, on a, on a project basis. Another thing that they noted and shared was that, from, in their experience, a $2 million investment really equals about one and a half FTE. So I thought that was a good example for cost evaluation. Something I did want to note is we did speak with SO Ready, our regional partners on this too. They currently don't have capacity, but they are looking at being able to help support anything that we would recommend, what we would recommend. IBCDO is another current partner that we have. Their max is only 25,000, a lot smaller loan, similar fees though, 1% plus $200 for an admin fee and then 10% on interest. So that's just to give you an idea of the cost for third-party partners that we might utilize. If we were to look at an internal loan program and managing it ourselves, we would likely mirror what those third parties are doing because they are set up to provide a successful revolving loan program. And then that, of course, we would have to take into consideration that, that would likely lead to having additional FTE, yes.
So on that bullet there where it says 2 million investment equals 1.5 FTE, does that mean 1.5 FTE to administer that amount of investment?
Yeah, that's what they were suggesting.
Okay, thanks.
So back to just our loan considerations, the policy question here. Would council prefer to support a revolving loan program model, or a subsidized, or maybe a combination of both? And also, is the council interested in using third-party servicing for loans?
All right, questions about this? Go ahead, Rick.
So on the third-party servicing, what is your take on that? Is that a good thing, or do you like it to be in-house, or how's it worked or not worked?
Well, my take on it would be that it, it makes sense to utilize somebody that's already running these programs. They have a success, at least, one of the parties we talked to has a really successful model and has, and we could easily utilize them. I think internally, we would end up having about the same cost anyway, so those are my thoughts on it.
Good, thank you.
See, I can add on to that a little bit. We are not a financing institution, nor do we practice that in a day-in, day-out business. So our recommendation from just an administrative piece would be to go with a third-party administrator. Not to say that city staff couldn't do it, but it is not necessarily in our wheelhouse.
Joel?
So it seems to me like the 10% rate is fairly steep, especially in today's environment. So they don't change according to the prime rate, they just stay at 10%?
So in the case of IBCDO, they actually do prime plus 3%. And right now, it's more than that, but they cap at 10. They have a 10% cap on their program. CCD, they do say things are negotiable, but that's really, generally speaking, that's what they're looking at if they're gonna create a sustainable revolving loan fund.
Okay, then how does that compare with the, the bank, the prime rate plus 3%?
Oh, that's a good question.
Okay.
That's dependent on the business and who's asking for the loan too, right?
Sure.
So a lot of credit and things go into that. So just generically speaking, your risk-free rate right now for a five-year treasury rate is over 5%. So any bank is going to try and at least make their money back off of the risk-free. And so you're gonna get probably between 2% or 3% above that.
So what we'd be looking at today then, if I understand you correctly, is 5% plus 3%? So the loans would be at 8%, not 10%?
Right, and that's consistent with what she showed you with the other two entities that are administering small business loans in the area. They're trying to make their money back as far as what they're putting into it.
And then if the interest rate went up to 12%, like I did when I bought my first house, you would cap them at 10%?
So I think that's what they're outlining here. I have worked with other cities that have put themselves way beyond a plus three. They would be doing that more to be more like the last option that somebody may have and still allow for that. But it's not necessarily financially advantageous for the business owner at that point.
I think that's a good point. I was once a board member of CCD. And it was, we were financing those in, say, for instance, the second and third position. Many times these programs, you're not in first-position situation. And what I mean by that is the business isn't coming to you first and getting the loan, but you're there to fill the gaps that they couldn't get through financing in other ways. So you're usually need up in second or third position.
Other questions? Brian?
Just going back to the costs. You know, that, that metric of a $2 million investment is 1.5 FTE. What are we looking at as far as an investment amount? Are we, is that 2 million like what we're suggesting, or is it?
Not necessarily, no. That was just to give you a, a concept of, of cost, essentially. Later on, we do put out a recommendation, maybe a million dollars if that's what we decide to go for with loan. I guess that comes later because we're gonna talk about a lot of other potential costs that we're, we're gonna have to evaluate for the budget.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just trying to get a handle on the cost because 1.5 FTE of a clerk is different than, you know, CPA or whatever you want to say. So I'm just trying to figure out.
Yeah.
Is it, is, is that 100,000 a year, is that 180,000 a year, you know? I don't, I don't know.
That's specifically CCD's evaluation of it. So whatever they, that's, internally for them, that's what it costs.
Okay, thanks.
Joel?
Well, I just wanted to confirm the FTEs that are on the part of the third-party, not on the part of the city.
Yes.
Okay, so, yeah.
But something we would evaluate if we were to do an internal program. Okay. Shall we keep moving?
Well, I guess I feel like maybe we could stop and answer these questions here before we get too far down the road. Does anybody have thoughts? Brian?
Well, I would, I would agree that third-party servicing is, is probably the best way to go, just based on what I've heard from staff. So that one's pretty straightforward for me. The top question, I don't know that I have enough. And I'll have, it hasn't soaked in enough to really have a strong opinion one way or the other. Part of me says, you know, to have a more subsidized loan program would maybe be better for the businesses that are applying because it gives them a little more flexibility as far as like, you know, doing what they need to do. The other one's better for the city, so I don't know. I guess there's a case to be made for both of them, and I'm kind of on the fence right now on that.
Joel?
Well, what is our rate of return on our investments?
Currently, our portfolio is, I think, around four and a half. It's a little bit north of that, but right around there.
Other discussion on these questions? Or, or questions you have?
Yeah, well, on the first one, I agree with the third party. It only makes sense there. As to a revolving loan or a subsidized loan, I think it totally depends upon the project. So I, I don't want to close any doors. Of course, we would always like to protect the city, but there are times when something comes forth that is very community-oriented that might be willing. We might, a group, the council, whoever it is, may be willing to subsidize because it is a, a strong community project. So I think you keep your, your options open on that one.
Rick?
I would also agree on the third-party servicing. And I like the flexibility of keeping both programs on the revolving loan and subsidized loan program as well. Thank you.
Are the rest of you still thinking or agreeing?
I do want to just add, just a food for thought there by wanting to maybe be flexible, and I totally get that position. The issue with being flexible and deciding individually is there's a potential favoritism. So I just want to point that out.
Vanessa?
Yeah, thank you for that. That's exactly what I was thinking. It kind of adds a layer of complexity. I think we would have to come up with some kind of metric of what would meet the qualifications of a subsidized loan versus a revolving loan. And I don't have the answer to that.
I would agree. Some sort of criteria, I think, would be important.
Joel?
And in addition to that, I know, in, in no example should it go below our alternative rate of investment of, right now, it's 4%. So it shouldn't go below that.
All right, well, it sounds like there is interest in keeping both models on the table as possibilities, as well as using the third-party servicing.
All right.
All right.
Well, we can now dig into housing a little bit deeper. I know this is a topic we were also covered in, or we haven't covered quite yet, I guess. So in our housing goal, our Housing Advisory Committee, we were able to take some examples to them, and they came back and set a goal for this year to support completing the development of an urban renewal area high-density residential development incentive program. It's a mouthful. But, but some of the models, the, that they favored when we presented to them were systems development, charge buy-down and waiver program. The buy-down is really targeted at market-rate housing, whereas the waiver is targeted at affordable housing and can model after a program we currently have. They also favored low-interest loans. They really did want to focus on the high density, but they wanted to make sure, I believe they made a motion to dedicate $3 million specifically to affordable housing out of that 10 million that's been allocated. And then they really like the idea of just incentive bundling, getting, there are other incentives like tax rebates that come from other programs that we could bundle to maximize incentivizing housing development. So what we're really looking at is trying to create a bit of a menu of incentives for housing so that we can try and meet the needs and, and get several different types of housing projects going.
Can you define, as applied here, what you mean by buy-down versus waiver? What is a buy-down?
Yeah, this next slide is about the buy-down program. So if you don't mind, I'll go ahead and move on to that and explain it a little bit better. So this is actually an example from the city of Roseburg. They have a URA multi-family housing system development, charge buy-down program. In their program, it's a market rate, the eligibility is market-rate, multi-family housing. And in their case, it's three-plus units. Part of what they do in this program, the urban renewal assumes the responsibility for SDCs up to $5,000 per unit. And what they saw when they implemented this program, this is their return on investment. They've been in existence, their urban renewal, for four years. They have 400-plus units that have been built and approximately about a million dollars of their URA investment using this program. This is another return on investment, I guess, is that they can pay those SDCs over time. They can pay it at a future date. And that those projects, those houses are taxable upon completion at the market rate design. So it starts to pay back the URA right away. So that, this was just an example from Roseburg. But, but in this case, the buy-down would be focused at market rate. And the $5,000 per unit, again, the URA assumes that on behalf of the developer so that we can pay that back to the city over time.
Did that answer your question, Rob?
I still don't understand what, what, what buy-down means. I'm sorry, is there another way to say it?
So with the, the system development charge, whatever that fee is per unit for the developer, we put, they put a set amount towards it. In this case, they put $5,000 per unit.
I, I would think of it as a discount. It's a $5,000 discount on SDC fees because normally, if you're gonna do a, a house, your SDC fees are in excess of $5,000. So you're just getting a $5,000 discount.
Yeah.
So, so Dana, you said taxable upon completion, payback to the URA. Is that just regular taxes, or is that a separate fee that's put on there to reimburse?
It's, I, I thought that might be confusing. It's not a separate fee, it is just a regular taxes. It's just that idea that, that they go on the tax rolls and they're all, they're now part of the URA, they're paying into that.
Joel?
So I, I just need to clarify something because I'm a newbie on SDCs. I've never paid any in my life. If you pay up to $5,000 per unit and they put in 400-plus units, that would be a, a big chunk of change. But they only spent, or they only invested a million dollars for those 400 units. So an SDC charge for a rental unit or a high-density unit is, it, it, it would be very rare, I would guess, for it to be up to $5,000. And so why do we have it set so high?
This isn't our example, this is their model that they, they adopted.
Why would they have it set so high?
I think it was to incentivize the development. They wanted to get the house, it to be built. And in some cases, at least just in talking with their community development director, he said in some cases, it didn't cover the full amount of the SDCs, and in some cases, it did, so.
Okay, because if you had 400 units and $5,000 per unit, that would be $2 million, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I just was wondering what, what the difference was there. Okay, thank you.
Did you have something, Brad?
Well, Jason can speak to this better, but I just wanted to be clear that the 5,000 is, is. Well, Jason can speak to this better, but I just wanted to be clear that the 5,000 is actually low.
Whoa, okay.
Any other questions on buy-back, buy-down?
Yes.
So I'm sure this program won't cover our whole deficit, but our deficit is what, 7,000?
Our deficit?
Units?
I'm sorry, oh, units, so.
No, 1,000? Okay, 1,000 units, okay. So that would be $5 million at 5,000, and that might be low.
And again, their program, it's up to $5,000. So it could be that a program that applies would get $2,500 per unit based on their grant to work.
Sure, I understand. Okay, I'm just trying to wrap my brain around it. Thank you.
And I'm assuming that when it says taxable upon completion, that means that it didn't use any MPT funds or anything else, which gave it a five-year, these are taxable, which brings in and raises that land value.
Right. And that was part of the criteria that they set specifically for this program.
That is a great, thank you, council, that is a great clarifier there, is you are investing in market rate, not affordable housing. Therefore, the Urban Renewal Agency does start to get a return as soon as those are developed.
Okay. Okay, no more questions at this point.
Some other things to consider, this is, again, we're just talking generally about housing, some of the challenges that we have within our urban renewal area. We have really limited, underdeveloped parcels within our URA that are eligible for multi-family residential. We found that there were 22 parcels that met this criteria of one-plus acres that are zoned properly at either general commercial, R3 or R4. And then these are also underdeveloped, which the criteria for that is that it's in its improvement value is less than 10,000. So most of those lots are going to be vacant or have very old or small structures on them, maybe. And then other considerations would just be making sure that there's access to utilities and then wetlands. This next one, just a closer look at those properties. You can see on the south, the southwest end of town off of Redwood Avenue, those red properties are general commercial. On the north side of town, we have some general commercial, and then you see a few that are in the yellow. That's going to be R4 properties. And then just those few properties to the east, that's over near Winco. Oh, I forgot, I have my little pointer. I should be doing this. So this, over by Winco, you can see there's some general commercial, and then this is an R3 lot there. You can see, though, we have some limited space that we can be doing these projects. Some other housing considerations and maybe opportunities to consider, because we don't have a lot of large lots, we could look at consolidation of smaller parcels or assembling lots so that we could maybe create a larger housing project. And then we could also just look within our commercial zones. Mixed-use developments is something that is, you know, within our recommended housing criteria, something that could be within a program. We also have general commercial height limit code amendments being worked on right now internally. If the height limits were adjusted, we could then build up on smaller parcels. Right now, our central business district also are known as our climate area, friendly area, I'm sorry. It goes up to 500, 500, goes up to 100 feet, I'm sorry. That's the height limit there. That's current, so we could, you know, look at building in those areas. But there are some challenges as well when it comes to historic buildings and things like that. And then we have, also have that discussion of downtown upper-story revitalization as an opportunity. That does lead me into talking about that a little bit, the results from our downtown upper-story revitalization survey. A memo did go out to council on December 7th, the results of that. We did have eight participants that wanted to be added to an inventory of interested owners. You can see the little diagram here shows what the top three incentives are that the property owners would be interested in. So that's grant assistance, a fee waiver, and tax abatement. Currently, with our recommendations, we feel that this could, these individuals could be served through the program recommendations we're making. But it could be something, I don't know if we need to look at a specialized program or not for downtown. Another thing to consider is just leveraged investment. So the fourth incentive that was the next highest, I guess, was historic preservation program support. We could leverage funds from historic preservation, match it with URA, and potentially make these projects more feasible. So it might be something to just take into consideration as far as timing to access those programs. If Main Street is formed, that might be one way that we can access those funds. So on housing, the policy questions then are which incentives would the council like to prioritize to stimulate housing development within the URA? And then, given the complexity and cost of loan programs, does it make sense for the city to purchase property as part of a public-private partnership to stimulate and incentivize the desired development? Just some things to consider. Yes, Councilor Rick?
So Dana, on that first item, we've mentioned that we're looking for housing in the old buildings downtown in the second story. And the main roadblock has been sprinkler systems in the second story. Is there a way the city could get involved with coordinating different buildings or businesses in putting, bringing down the cost of putting those sprinklers in? Like if you, could we get by with, instead of an individual building having the very expensive fire meter, could you put a group of buildings on one meter to help lower the cost? Are you aware of that?
I haven't looked into that or learned about it.
I think that those specific examples, councilor, would be pretty challenging, you know, just because of the ownership. And, you know, you're dealing with property lines a lot when you're looking at downtown, and the way that the Oregon's building code is set up in terms of crossing infrastructure across property lines. You know, I think most of the examples that we're seeing in other communities, you know, they really are working with just individual property owners on the investment that they want to make in their particular property, rather than the city coming in and trying to look at some sort of, you know, more cross-border or block, you know, like a full-block approach.
Okay, thank you.
Valerie?
Yeah, I have a question on that climate-friendly area. Has that officially been chosen, and is that our downtown area?
So the, as you know, the city's part of the group of 13 cities that are involved with the lawsuit to challenge that, that ruling. No decision's been made on that, so we're continuing to progress with the implementation, just in case that lawsuit fails, so we're not so far behind. The rules required us by December 31st of last year to submit our study that says, here's where the CFA boundary is. We brought that to you, you know, a couple of months ago, and it's essentially the central business district boundary. Now, that's, it's not in effect in the sense of the rules. We don't have to have the ordinances updated until the end of this year. So at the end of December 31st of '24, we have to have the ordinances in place that support the central, the climate-friendly area boundary. So that's, you know, we're getting closer, but it's not in effect technically.
The reason I say that is that when I look at that particular area, in our downtown area, in terms of the number of units that we would be able to get out of some of those upstairs units as opposed to some of the lots that are available in some of the other areas, that it seems like it would be wise to try to get those other areas because you're going to get more bang for the buck in terms of, and anytime you open up market renting, you automatically kind of do the shuffle. People, some people move up, and that opens up a lot of other areas for, so I would lean towards doing something similar to what Roseburg did in terms of trying to incentivize market rate because that's needed as well. And who knows what will come down in a month from now from the legislature in terms of incentivizing workforce housing and that, too. But I would like to get, as we all would, a few pieces of property out in a certain area, have them have some true incentives to get moving on building apartments. So I see the Roseburg sort of thing doing that. And not worrying so much about the climate-friendly because I think actually that would do us, you know, I want to see something upstairs, but really I was amazed at how few people wanted to do their upstairs and realizing the cost involved and the number of units you get for that is really pretty small.
Joel, and then Rob?
So I had a question. You asked the question, does the city want to buy the property? So how does that work? Does that take it off the tax rolls and somebody else builds a building on city-owned land with the city owning the deed? How does that work?
I think that's the basic model. I haven't looked into it in a lot of depth yet, but basically what other cities do in a private partnership scenario under urban renewal is purchase the property, have the developer develop it. That is their investment in supporting the developers, the purchase of the property. They develop it, and then the property goes to the developer afterwards, and then it would go back on the tax rolls. I guess it would depend on what the housing project was, those two. If it were to be affordable housing versus market rate, I think there'd be a lot of, a lot to evaluate to.
So if I understand you correctly, the way that would work is the city would buy a lot. They would advertise a call for bids or whatever for somebody to build the infrastructure on that lot. And then at the completion of that, they would then deed the title over to that contractor. Is that what I understand? Do I understand that correctly?
Yeah, that's my understanding as well. Yeah, what I've seen in other cities, so. Oh, Amber.
Brad? Oh, Amber.
So there's a couple of different ways that could happen. The first example you were talking about tends to be more for affordable housing, where the city can either retain the ownership and lease for a low cost. The second option was mentioned earlier about the city purchasing lots for lot assembly, doing the work to remove the tax lines, maybe doing some of the basic stuff that can help with infrastructure, and then putting it back on the market as a larger zoned properly lot that maybe has a few improvements that a developer could then put market-rate housing on easier. Because our developers are looking for larger lots. So maybe we have a couple of infill lots next to each other that could be bought and put together.
Yeah, thank you.
It's not that, and that latter description isn't much unlike the Ellenwood project that we're doing right now. We're taking a piece of property, and ultimately, it would go on the public rolls, tax roll, and it would be owned publicly, privately, not publicly owned by the city. And we would be incentivizing development according to the development standards that are set forth in the RFP that council was desiring to make that, say, for instance, market-rate housing.
Rob?
Yeah, I think, I appreciate Amber, your last comment. I think that the end goal really needs to be market-rate housing rather than lower-income housing. From a pure perspective, you look at, I guess, the concept of tax-dicament financing, and why you do a URA is because eventually the public actually, it's good business from the taxpayer's perspective, meaning that taxpayers or the general public gets a return. We have land that isn't paying much on the tax rolls, and that land becomes, one way or another, more valuable. We end up making money on it. I mean, there are examples where this council is using it in a different way, but I don't really like straying from essentially the purity of being, having it be a good financial investment for the people. So one way or another, whether it's directly or taking large parcels and making them more desirable, getting them back at market, for market-rate housing, back on the tax rolls, I think, really should be one of our goals because that actually is kind of a self-sustaining model over a long period of time. And the other is clearly not. It's just, it's another way of essentially subsidizing low-income housing. But from a financial perspective, that doesn't really, it's not sustainable. So definitely, one way or another, ending up at market rate is what I would favor.
I just want to comment on that real quick. So currently, low-income housing does still pay taxes. We do have, one of our housing production strategies included was to implement the low-income housing tax exemption. So we are looking in the future to enable that tax exemption, but currently, they do still pay a good portion of those taxes.
So when you say a good portion, what does that mean?
Brad, I might need a little help on exactly which ones. I'm pretty sure they pay pretty much everything within the city and the county currently. The tax exemption program would lower it. The only ones that don't are the ones that have a formal partnership with HUD, with Housing Authority. So any of the other ones that don't have that formal partnership would still be tax-eligible.
But aren't we told constantly that nobody can do low-income projects without HUD in this day and age? Like, we're told that all the time.
So it depends on the type of partnership. So the, I believe the Ramsey, Nebraska project, they have some HUD vouchers on units, but it might not be a formal tax or a formal partnership. Whereas having Jackson County Housing Authority, who's developing, that's clearly involved with HUD. There are other properties that get built with just low-income housing tax incentive and not any HUD subsidization. So that one, those ones wouldn't be involved with that HUD partnership in that way. So we do see quite a bit of housing that gets built non-HUD. We have a couple in the city that are rural development only. That wouldn't be going forward since we're no longer rural, but those ones currently would still be on our tax rolls because rural development is a separate program. There's home funding. There's many different ways that low-income housing can get built, but HUD is one of the more common ones.
When you say can get built, but is it getting built?
Currently, the most common is the tax credit. The goal is always to layer as many as you can, but the most common that we're seeing is tax credit, which is not HUD.
Other questions? We got a whole bunch of hands, discussion. Does anybody have a question, or are you discussing? Okay. Do you have a question, Rick? Okay, go ahead.
So can you explain tax credit to me?
Sure. So the way tax credit works is the developer can get a tax credit every year on every unit that's affordable. Now, if a nonprofit builds tax credit, is what we see often. They can sell those tax credit to someone like Evergreen Bank or another business. So then they get that funding upfront to build the development. And then that investment organization then has that contract throughout the 21 years of the tax credit program that every unit that's there, they get to claim on their taxes as a tax credit. So that's how that partnership works. Those units don't come with a subsidizing. They come with a rent cap for size, and they come with an AMI limit. So you still have to income verify those units, though. However, you income verify on your first year, and after that, you can be above the income limit. So it does let people work and level up throughout the program, whereas some of the other programs do have caps where they then have to ask you to leave. So it's a really good program.
Thank you.
How about Vanessa, then Valerie, then Brian?
I did want to share, last fall, when we went to the LOC conference, I learned a lot specifically about Eugene's URA program. And they have been very successful in their housing endeavors with their URA, specifically because of their incentive bundling. So I'm really happy to see that here today as an option. I do agree with all of the model programs that were favored by the Housing Advisory Committee. I think I would also like to see, of course, the property acquisition and the lot assembly included as well. I even think, missing from that conversation, that we might have a great opportunity to begin exploring is the multi-unit property tax exemption. begin exploring is the multi-unit property tax exemption. And I know that that is, it sounds counterproductive to the URA, but I know Eugene has had success leveraging with that program and the incentive bundling. They've been able to leverage hundreds of more units of housing that already were not paying property taxes. And of course, once they come online, that return of investment is that much higher at that time. And I think that answers the two main questions before us.
Valerie?
I didn't, I don't think I have a hand up.
Oh, okay. Brian?
I think Vanessa mostly covered kind of what I was going to say regarding the second question up there. Given the complexity and cost of loan programs, I personally think it probably does make sense for the city to take an approach, you know, like, I guess, more maybe like a land bank approach, it could be called. We've heard that that is, you know, a very strong tool and incentive to get larger housing projects built. And so, as Valerie mentioned, if we want to get like the most bang for our buck out of this, I think that that is definitely one piece of the puzzle. And yeah, I just agree with the other methods as well. So thanks.
Anybody else?
I think that takes us.
Have what you need on that topic?
Yeah, I think we've got it. So now we're just going to move into urban renewal, more general discussion about projects and funding. Bradley Clark's going to come up in a bit too and help with some of the presentation. Well, let's just start out again by looking at our projects. This are our project categories and the allocation ratios. So when we're looking here, in our previous discussion today, we were trying to cover these elements of the urban renewal. This is the grant and loan programs. We're going to get into a little further discussion about the public infrastructure, but the special projects was something that came up at the last workshop, questioning about what's happening with Business Incubator and Town Center Plaza. So we'll cover some of that as well. Again, this slide is just that list and it shows the allocations that we have lined out for our current projects. Let's talk a little bit about the Business Incubator. Currently, the allocation is $3.15 million. There have been some significant changes in the local hub partnerships that we've had since the URA plan was adopted in 2016. Some of those are, you know, namely the RCC in 2020, they had decided not to pursue that innovation hub. In 2021, Community Connections, they submitted a grant for an innovation hub to the USDA. It was not approved. They were going for $950,000 and the city had committed to match $25,000 if that did go through, but it did not. So that's just a little bit of background. CBDG programming, they have funds for innovation hub support and they continue to include some of that. But right now, we do have a regional innovation hub through SO Ready. It's in formation. They do have a steering committee to move forward, but in this new design that they're looking at, it's really focused more on a virtual hub, not so much a physical space like the original idea that we have been discussing for Business Incubator. We could look at a potential URA plan minor amendments to reallocate those funds, maybe retain the project with a zero balance, just in the case that we might see something come up in the future that models what we're looking at, or just reduce the allocation. So on this particular item, project number 10, should the hub be retained as a URA project? Counselor, Rick.
So Dana, what I hear you saying, the $3.15 million basically has been sitting there but not being used?
Correct.
Was there any additional money or projects prior to the current presentation? Was there use?
There was a small portion of this that was utilized for a feasibility study. I'm not sure what year that was. I think it was in 2018, but I think that's all that's been spent out of this particular project.
Okay.
So the $3.15 is what remains in there right now.
Valerie?
Yeah, I think there's like $200,000 or something that was, they didn't spend very much of it, but they were looking at the building that's no longer belongs to RCC. They sold it, so that kind of threw it out. I'm just kind of curious as to what a hub without a building entails, because I keep hearing their talk about that and I don't understand the concept.
Yeah, we're hoping to get a little bit more information, but the, right now, the design is thought to be, the best way that I can picture it is almost like a database where all of the, all of the different economic development resources can access similar information. When people go to access services and support, they go to this one hub and the information between the different economic development entities is shared to some extent. So it is kind of a.
Yeah, because I know that they've done further studies. I think it was SO Ready and Business Oregon. I know we're talking about, have been talking about that and said it is coming, but it's really hard to understand it because it's so different than what it started out as. So in that case, like I said, I think it only makes sense that if there's something else that we could use it for right now and just keep it there with a zero balance, it gives us options down the road if we did see something start to develop from it.
Brian?
I guess on the policy question, we currently have $3.15 million allocated to this item and personally, it seems like we have a lot more important things that we could be utilizing those resources on. We're already going to be running into, you know, kind of a funding timeline bandwidth issue with the URA, with all of the other competing priorities. So I would personally be inclined to kind of, you know, at least severely, you know, reduce the amount of funding to this item or take it down to zero as Valerie recommended just because I see a lot more important priorities than this in our near future.
Rick?
So Dana, what was the original source of the $3.15 million?
It's urban renewal funds. It's just, it's an allocation from.
So I want to confuse, yeah, I want to clarify because I heard through the discussion maybe some confusion. There's not an extra $3 million that has already been allocated to that project. That's just what, from a plan perspective, has been allocated. The total give or take that the Urban Renewal Agency has right now, I just checked with JC and being an amazing finance director was able to tell me right off the bat, we have about $6 million in urban renewal. So when we're talking about these projects and these allocations, it's not hard money that we have in the bank right now. This is just future allocation. So that goes back to what Counselor De La Grange said. You may want to look at in the future different allocations or elimination of allocations of some of these projects as your priorities change.
I appreciate that clarification. It really makes better understanding. Thank you.
Joel?
So I would agree with what Brian said and we need to allocate and realizing that money isn't in the hand, that $3.15 million. And I know there's some changes to some other items here that we probably need to discuss as well as we go forward.
Vanessa?
I'm also in agreement.
Okay. Sounds like the current direction is to reallocate those funds from the innovation hub.
Great, thank you. Yeah, we're looking at, I know it was requested at the last workshop that we cleaned up the list a little bit and so that's what part of this discussion. Another item that's currently funded through the URA is this downtown Owl Lot Plaza project. The design was approved by council in October and the expense of that is $9,200. There is an engineering estimate that we should be receiving in March or April of this year. So we really do need to consider our budget for 2025 and what those costs might be for engineering and construction on this project.
So is there an allocation for Owl Lot?
Under.
Says project 16.
So, yeah, so that's the downtown plaza, street scape, lighting and restrooms. That's part of that allocation.
And did we already spend some of that on the restrooms?
Yes. Do you want to speak to that, Brad? I don't have the slide for it. You're up after the setting. Okay. Yeah, so I guess some was, you're talking about for the Portland Lou's?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, there have been some allocated, and I'm not sure, Brad's going to have to speak to that because he has the details on which fund that came from, but I am going to hand it over to Bradley Clark right now to continue this conversation. I'll be right here though if you have any questions.
Okay, sounds good. I think as opposed to the last project, we're looking at possible need to allocate more to this fund? Is that why it's in this?
For the Owl Lot?
Yes.
That is very likely.
Okay.
That's why we didn't put a number up there because at this point, the concept's been approved, we're, you know, the engineering is underway, but as you well know, until we get those hard cost estimates after the engineering, it's very difficult to put a price tag. But the $2 million, when you do, when you do take out some of the, because we have $500,000 urban renewal money that was all, you know, prior allocated, a lot of the numbers that we're talking about up here are reflecting moving ahead in the Urban Renewal Agency of monies that, yes, are in the Urban Renewal Agency plan that have been allocated as total amounts but haven't been actually put into a budget. Now, remember, we have several million dollars of money that has been from the Urban Renewal Agency that has already been reflected in prior adopted budgets. Those are monies that are already accounted for and that includes the LB 6314 Downtown Restrooms and Welcome Center, $500,000 of urban renewal money that is, in essence, and correct me if I'm wrong, JC, but is kind of already been addressed and taken care of. So when we're putting numbers up here, we're not, we're not, we're talking about unallocated that hasn't been put into a budget yet. Do you want to address that, JC, if I got anything wrong?
Nope. You hit the nail on the head. And to go further into that, this also is housing the Welcome Center project, which we needed to allocate even more. That was just on your last consent agenda item, so that money is more or less spent.
But the money that we allocated came from the prior. It's not $2 million that we're talking here. So I just want to make sure that this $2 million that we're talking about here is moving future, not lose, not current spent Welcome Center. Thank you.
So Dana, as we were talking about just some of the specific projects, Josh is in the audience too and he can, if you have any questions, but you received a memo on Friday that, on the Caveman Pool, that has a more detailed cost estimate. Hopefully, you were sitting down when you read it. Not that unexpected, but the main reason we're putting this slide into this presentation is because when we're talking about the overall URA plan and thinking about where does, you know, the council want to go with this, we just, we're talking about the $5 million that has been in there from the beginning for Caveman Pool. But we wanted to get you that detailed memo last week so you could have a little bit more context about, you know, where we're at with the pool. We're talking about when you add the ARPA money and the LB 6393 that's already allocated, then you're talking, and you get that estimated construction cost range of, you know, approximately 13 million. And we still have unidentified resources of, you know, 6.5 to 7.2 million. So, and that, you know, that already takes the $5 million of URA out. So that's why we included in that memo some other non-URA thoughts for you, including, you know, a general obligation bond or some other types of tools. So as we're moving ahead, I think the goal here today was just to, you know, remind the council that we do still have that gap, but that $5 million, we're assuming in our planning up to today is going to be used for the pool because that is a project that's in the plan, in the urban renewal plan. So you have talked a couple of different times about some other, we're calling them, you know, catalytic type projects. And we've brought to you in some of your other urban renewal meetings, some examples from other cities where they have, you know, focused their urban renewal money on one significant type of project or investment that, you know, can be called a transformative public investment or, you know, some kind of legacy project. Those are, you know, it's an idea. Now, you have given direction up to this point to continue to focus on the 17 projects that are in the urban renewal plan, four of which are the private investments that Dana talked about earlier. Since the Redwood Hotel, we didn't get much traction on that. That was one of your objectives a couple of years ago. Another objective or goal was the Caveman Plaza. We didn't get any traction on that. So in light of that and thinking, you know, about the Tap Rock example, which of course was not urban renewal funding, but it's just a local example of kind of what you can see happen at, you know, a scale that can really start to have trickle effect. I think I might have mentioned this to the council before, but I worked for a city in Idaho, Meridian, Idaho, which is a suburb of Boise just to the west. And they had a core downtown property that was an old gas station that had been abandoned for probably about 15 years. I mean, it's sort of your prototypical example of blight. You know, it just was not doing much. And through their urban renewal, you know, that was demolished, the underground storage tanks were removed, they ended up putting up a, you know, a two-story mixed-use building and then a plaza where that old gas station was. I wish I would have got the numbers for you now, but it has resulted in probably seven to eight times, you know, that initial investment in terms of just within the downtown of Meridian. And in talking to some of those developers at the time, you know, one of the things they say is, well, hey, it looks like, you know, this, somebody chose to put an investment in here. It's high quality, it's attractive, I want to be part of that. I want to be, I want to participate in this and it's going to help my values as well because this property has gone from, you know, a blighted property to a really high quality, it's attracting people coming to downtown. So, which I think is what you were sort of, you know, going at with the Redwood Hotel and the Caveman Plaza, you know, some of these projects. So there's a couple of, the reason we're bringing it up is here because you do still have, you know, this project 14, which is called Underdeveloped Land. That's one of the larger funded, allocated URA projects. And then 17 is housing. So, you know, and you're, not that you would have to use housing, but a lot of times in those mixed-use projects, you know, you can, you can braid your funding and get your housing money as well as your, you know, your other economic development funding. So those are currently two projects that we could think of in this light of sort of what could be a real catalytic project. Of course, you're not limited to that. I mean, at this point, you have the opportunity to amend the plan, you can consolidate projects, you can focus in on just four or five of them. But in that light, we're thinking of, okay, well, where is it, there's a niche for Grants Pass and certainly, as you all know, we're, in terms of the Rogue Valley, the only significant-sized city that has the Rogue River going right through it. This was anticipated many, many years ago when the riverfront tourist commercial district zone was created. That was, that was part of the comprehensive plan. It's part of the comprehensive plan today, envisioning, you know, along that waterfront area. today, envisioning, you know, along that waterfront area. So there has been, that, that second to last bullet there talks about a bridge to the recent multimillion private investments and those, the two main projects there. Shekels, you know, has, has constructed those short-term rentals right across from the furniture store, Gates Furniture. And then, of course, you have the conversion of the bank that we've seen just on, also on L Street between Sixth and Seventh. Doesn't have any occupants today, but you've got the human being that was on that, on that same property. So if you look at it from a planning standpoint and thinking about revitalization of downtown, you know, and bridging where some of the investments right at the core have been, and then seeing that kind of as a stepping block and sort of going down towards the river, how can you, you know, encourage that investment so that you see that kind of continuation of downtown all the way to the river? So again, the RTC zoning district is really already there and allows for that. That's kind of along the bridges, the bridges, both currently and, and future bridges where some of these could go. And just to clarify again, this is just one concept. I mean, you could also look at others, but I think you've, you've already talked about the two probably most likely downtown properties that have some potential. And so since those didn't materialize, at least to this point, we're just kind of putting another one out before the council. So this RTC district, the purpose is provide for and promote a special tourist commercial uses adjacent to the Rogue River where either existing or proposed bridges are located. The uses that are currently in the code would need to be located adjacent to the river for their existence or utilize the river scenic quality for economic development. And then there's some sample uses listed there, things like multi-dwellings, condos, lodgings, performing arts, eating and drinking establishments, river-related retail, things like that. Those are the uses that are currently encouraged and allowed in that zone. To date, we haven't seen any development on any of the parcels that have RTC zoning. So one thought is a potential use of the URA funds for market feasibility, you know, or to look at some exploratory, exploratory partnerships for some kind of mixed-use project. So those are the main projects in the URA we wanted to put forward to you, those existing ones that we're spending on and then to kind of just maybe prime the pump a little bit on the, on the potential for something new. So you have already talked about this today a little bit, but this slide just kind of summarizes where we're at today with the funding. So if you look at revenues, actuals plus the 2% growth, and this right column is the FY '25 budget. So remember, this is, this is, Aaron mentioned a little bit earlier, 6 million. This 8 million reflects what we're anticipating, so that adds another 2 million. So we're, we're just, for round, for round numbers, say, let's say 8 million looking at FY '25. We all, we always have some hard costs with the agency, just around $93,000. Take the caveman pool out, 5 million. The water debt service, which again has been in there from the beginning, and you have already reached a consensus in October on that number, I think it ends, yeah, 438,000. And then the Owlet Plaza, now we're only showing 163,000 here. That, that is looking at the fact that we currently have a fund balance in the Plaza LB account of 337,000. This just brings that back up to the 500,000 that was, that was planned for. That is obviously, as we talked about, not near enough to actually build the Plaza. So, you know, we can, we, we will know more in a couple of months what that would be, but we just wanted to show the numbers that we actually know today. So that would leave 2.3 million. And then the question becomes, what do you want to do? Assuming that everything above that are, that you're still committed to. And housing has been a priority for the council from day one, so we're showing a million there. If you decide to go with, you know, a loan-type program, that could capitalize that with a million. Grants is just the number that we've been using, 250,000. Again, that's if you assume around that $50,000 cap for a private grant on average. So, you know, that, that gives you a handful of $50,000 grants in the URA that could be distributed, so if you wanted to keep that. And then you've got a little bit of balance remaining. So Councilor De La Grange mentioned at the beginning, there's a lot today. In that light, we, we think that it would be wise to really put a five-year strategy together for the agency, just an implementation strategy. At this point, you know, we've been taking each one as it comes, and, and we're really fortunate in that there's still a lot of funding. You've been very wise with that. On the downside, there's only 22 years left. And these projects are big and complex, and before you know it, we're going to be at the end. So having a strategy that we put together, and these would be just some ideas, do a deep dive into the feasibility and cost benefit of, of, you know, large projects or a catalytic project, recommended distribution of those resources over that five-year period, looking at city-initiated projects, and that again would be things like Spalding Industrial Park, public engagement. At this point, we have had just one forum focused on the urban renewal agency, but, you know, we've also talked about doing mailers to URA property owners to inform them about what their opportunities are. We have not done that. So this would be another thing that could be talked about in this plan. Council and private sector alignment, combination of financial resources, you know, how do you leverage the various opportunities with grants, with federal money? You know, the URAs are allowed to, to take loans themselves totally separate from the city. You know, what are we really maximizing what we can with, with the URA? So we think that's a wise approach. And in the call to action, that's why we, we have, we have that in there. Now, in terms of what that subcommittee would look like to actually put that implementation plan together, that's obviously up to you. Our thought was that you would have a couple of URA board members slash city councilors, a couple of property owners in the, in the district, and, you know, a couple of staff. So those are kind of the things where we're at. I, you know, I think just, as you well know, we have, we have, the clock's ticking on these things. So several of them are, are underway, like the, like the Plaza. You know, and you're also dealing, just in, you know, in the agency's defense, with 1,300-acre URA, which is very unusual in my experience and looking at the organ. I mean, Aaron would know better. So you're, you're dealing with a geographic area that is, is very, very large and lots of properties. You know, Councilor Jay mentioned Eugene. Well, if you look at the acreage of Eugene's three URAs, you know, they're, they're more around that, between 50 and 200 acres. Bend has, I think, four URAs, you know, and those are somewhere around that, that 300, 400 acre. So 1,300 acres is big, and it gives you the opportunity, yes, but it also has challenged you, I think, as, as an agency to like, how do we take this octopus and, you know, kind of focus it? And I think that's what we're at least hoping that the five-year implementation strategy could, could help to do. We would put a lot of resources towards that to help get that done so that it could really focus. But again, you know, a couple of big questions today are, are before you, including that $5 million for the, for the pool.
Council, questions or thoughts about the subcommittee idea? Go ahead, Joel.
Well, I was just wondering, you expect us to solve this today?
Five minutes.
In the next five minutes?
The answer is no, not to come up with a solution, but to provide direction that we should probably explore a, like what was mentioned here, a plan, a five-year plan so we can be focused. I think Bradley made a good point, is our urban renewal agency is large compared to others, and it was purposely made that way. But I, I think it, because of that, there are so many projects out there that it's been hard to focus. And having a five-year plan in place would come up with the solution. So once we have that in place, we would be able to focus. So that, that would be more of our moving forward, one of the items from today.
So if I understand what you just said, Aaron, our, our job before us right now is not to put together a five-year action plan in the next five minutes. It's, it's to design a process to get there.
Yes, it's to provide direction that, that sounds like a, a, a good idea, and staff would then move forward in, in developing that five-year plan and working with you and the community to make that happen. And then there are some other issues with dollars that are planned to be spent more immediately within the next few months and some direction there. But taking the first one, the five-year plan, yes, it would be wonderful if we got direction on, if council would like to entertain that type of focus that I think would provide us with better efficiency effectiveness in moving forward and planning strategically for those dollars.
Well, I think, you know, moving forward, we're not going to come up with a really good plan in the next five minutes. There's a lot of moving pieces. There's some new information we got this week. We all have our interests. I, I can think of, we could have a low barrier urban campground as part of the development of Spalding Park and, and using that infrastructure dollars to do that. You know, so there's, there's just a lot of moving pieces, and I, I think that we need to have that committee. I would support that.
Okay, Brian?
I think probably the first thing to say is I appreciate all the effort staff has put into today's presentation because I know that it's a lot, and we all know it's a lot. And I appreciate all the effort that's gone into it, so thank you for that. I think the subcommittee is a good idea. I had a question about how that would work with, because it specifically calls out private owner representation. So I could see that, how there could be ways that that could be done, and it's beneficial, and I could see how there could be ways that could be done where maybe it's less beneficial. So, so how would that work as far as like, you know, because I could, I could, I could see, you know, a private owner representation kind of like trying to angle maybe for something that they're involved in to some degree. So I don't know how we would, I guess, safeguard against that or have it be a private, private representation that's kind of, kind of neutral in a way or just, you know, do you know what I'm trying to get at?
I, I, yeah, no, I definitely hear you. I mean, there's a couple of ways. One, you know, it could be similar to how you do other committees where you just invite applications and then, you know, you, you, you select who that is, and that could be one of the questions on the application form is addressing, you know, that kind of neutrality that I think would, what you're getting at. You know, it could also be somebody that's potentially, you know, not, maybe they're in the Rogue Valley, but they're not actually in Grants Pass, or maybe they're in Joskin County, but they're not, you know, to kind of help distance that a little bit. But, you know, we, we deal with that all your committees, right? I mean, there's some level of risk, but that's also the accountability of the other members of the committee that kind of help, help to steer that during the discussions.
Okay, yeah, thank you. I think, you know, maybe we need to have another conversation about the makeup of the subcommittee later, but even, I could even see a case being made for, you know, non-private, like, you know, someone from the library district or, you know, like other, there's like other pieces that, because I know they own a big piece of property down there now that's kind of in that area we were, you were just talking about. So I could see the potential for maybe some other representation on there to help round out that subcommittee, but I generally think it's a good idea.
Rob?
I think it's a good idea also, and I think, you know, Brian's point is valid. We all, I think, know and probably need to remember or be reminded that if anyone is going to be really enthusiastic and really work hard on a committee like that, it's going to most likely be people that are, have the most to gain in a sense, whether it's, whether it's a sense that Grants Pass is a better place or whether they've got projects that they'd like to see pushed forward. And that's just the way it is with, I think, every committee we have. Everyone's got a vested interest, not a vested interest, but everyone is going to be very interested, the best, the best members, the people who are going to work more hours, the people who are going to make more phone calls, make more trips to other cities and so forth. They're going to have to be motivated by something, and seldom completely altruism works well that way. So I hear what you're saying, and we'd want to be careful that way, but I'm also not averse to having someone on a committee that is potentially right in the middle of, of an issue. When the time council would come to weigh those ideas, we'd have to consider that. But I also wouldn't want to eliminate somebody that could potentially be one of the most valuable members of such a committee, but a committee like that's a really good idea.
Dwayne is online, and he has said that he would support getting a committee to discuss this and come back with suggestions. Valerie?
I guess I just want clarity on exactly what the committee is doing, whether they're looking at all of these options and giving us and weighing all of them. Is that what they're doing? Like I said, I would like to see something done because I think a big part of this whole urban renewal is to get something completed and finished. And I think the biggest thing is the downtown plaza. I mean, that's been kicking around for so long that I just think having something finish up and be complete would be a huge kickoff for the URA as we move forward. And, and I agree completely with moving forward, especially if you're going to look at a legacy project, that you have community members. And a reminder that this is a private partnership, is you get the most out of it when you get private people involved to, to leverage their money as well to have the best input. So I'm truly in favor of it, but I'd also like to see us get something done and just as opposed to keep continually kicking, kicking, kicking down the road. I mean, the big ones, yes, but I also would really like to see us commit to getting the, at least to getting the, you know, coming up with some decision about the pool because I think that's huge and that's, you know, once again, every year we roll around and it's like, are we going to just run the pool this year or are we going to kick it down the road? I mean, that's just, I think, a community conversation needs, needs to happen, especially with increased need for more funding and choices are going to have to be made. So maybe that would be a good one for this committee, but I just, like I said, I don't want to throw everything at the committee. I just want the long-term there.
I think the ask here is for, yeah, for the five-year strategy, and I think, you know, what that would come down to is council, although you would have the final say, right? You're kind of trusting path, path style that this subcommittee, whether it's, you know, would be more or less coming up with the plan for you to, to sign off on or make some small amendments to. But it does require giving up some authority in that sense to have them take a deep dive and develop the plan rather than do it at the full council level. So I think that's one, one consideration here. And then, yeah, obviously, we do have some moving parts right now that are more immediate with the Owl and the, and the caveman pool project, as well as, obviously, council just gave some direction earlier today to eliminate the hub funding. So, yeah, I guess, I think that's where, where you're at is deciding on a long-term plan, and I think the reason for this maybe has to do with the history of how the URA was started in that it wasn't started with a clear goal of doing urban renewal projects. It was started with the goal of funding to help with water treatment plants. So now we, we have to find our purpose and what we want to spend this money on as we move forward. Rick?
I'm also in favor, as Brian said, moving forward.
I'm also in favor, as Brian said, moving forward with a five-year plan, and I think it would be a real advantage involving the community, and I realize the council has the final say in how the money's dispersed, but to have that roadmap, I think would be a real bonus. Thank you.
Rob, then Joel?
Yeah, I think, you know, what Valerie says is really accurate with regards to stay focused on the, the projects that we know that are in front of us, like the pool. With regards to some of the others, I mean, you know, we looked at, you know, Redwood Hotel, we looked at the Plaza, for whatever reason, variety of different reasons, those, just, we struck out on those. But, I think that we're looking for a potential committee that is more creative than, than we've been. You know, we had a couple of ideas, didn't work, now we're nowhere with regards to new, new ideas. And it may be possible that if you have a committee, that, you know, and someone who's really adept in construction and finance and so on and so forth, they may be able to figure out a way to, to make that Redwood Hotel project come back to life. It's quite possible. I mean, we've got, they may have connections around the state with people who have done similar projects. But so far, the people that we've tapped, and with our brain power, we've had, we're at a dead end, so to speak. So, I'd like to see what a committee can do and be creative, and essentially say, you know, what do you got, and what are your friends, what are, what are your friends and colleagues and from around the state have to say? If they were faced with this situation and this potential amount of funding, what could you do for Grants Pass? So, I'd like to see some creativity there and an open mind, and, and just come up with some new ideas, because we're kind of out of new ideas, but we do need to stay focused on the pool and others.
Joel?
So, I agree with what everybody's saying, and we delegate the authority to draft a plan, and then we keep the responsibility to make a final plan. So, we can't, we can't delegate the responsibility, we can only delegate the authority for them to do that, and that's appropriate. I had a quick question. Under the water treatment plant with URA funds, it talks about a loan, do those get paid back?
So, the URA was structured to pay back 18% of the debt service for the water filtration plant, so the URA is not loaning the water filtration plant any money, it's helping the water fund to pay the debt service for construction of the new facility.
Okay, so then, we won't see that money back, it's a capital investment?
That is correct.
Okay, it's not a loan. Okay, thank you.
All right, sounds like there is a lot of council interest in moving forward with that committee for the, the five-year plan.
I just want clarity, because I'm not sure. So, are we taking them and having them come up with a plan for the pool as well? I mean, I guess that's what I'm unclear about, is I don't want to designate it a plan, you know, and I agree with everything you said, Rob, in terms of, you know, I love the outside community attention put forth from somebody to say, yes, this is, you know, this is what we see, this is how we see it happening, because I agree, I think there's a lot of people that have that vision that we, that we haven't been able to pull together. But then I also say, in the media, you know, we have to make a decision on the pool, we have to make a decision on the, the other one, so are we saying beyond that, or are we including that in? And I guess that's still...
I mean, I guess, as far as I'm concerned, we need to have conversation about the pool and the Owl lot before we'll probably ever get to the point of establishing this other committee.
Well, I just wanted clarity in that, and that's what I assumed, but I haven't heard that, so I just wanted to make sure that that was the assumption that we were all on with that. Okay, thank you for that clarity.
Yeah, and you've, you've taken it a little bit further than what staff thought was, which was just, you know, more of a short-term committee focused on a five-year implementation strategy, but, you mean, this is great discussion. I mean, we can, we can come back to you with a, a little bit more, you know, written description of what that could be based on this conversation, but Mayor, I think you're right, I mean, without, without some clear direction on the, particularly the $5 million for the caveman pool, I mean, I think there, there may be some other opportunities to leverage other money for the Plaza. You've got the $2 million there, some of that's, you know, going to take away, we don't know exactly what it will cost, but it'll probably cost that or a little bit more to actually build it. So, but at a minimum, yeah, it sounds like, you know, once you have that workshop to do that deep dive into the caveman pool memo that we sent on Friday, that would help us understand better the framework for this subcommittee.
Joel, did you have something?
Yeah, I, I just, I think that committee has two tasks. The one is the overall strategy for URA as we go into the future. The pool's a part of it, but it's not all of it. And then the other part, that subset, after you have that, you have the $6 million in hand, how much, if any, should go to what project in the near future? So, you got those two, you got those two tasks, and how much they want to spend on each one, realizing they don't have the, the responsibility, they just have the authority to put some words on paper. So, I, and I would do the, the bigger task first, and then set the smaller task of that $6 million that we have in hand within that, how that fits.
Brian, then Vanessa?
So, would it be more accurate to call this subcommittee more of a task, a subtask force? Because it sounds like what you're proposing is more limited duration and not ongoing, so would it, would that be more accurate?
It would, that would reflect more of what, what staff thought was, yes.
Okay, and would those meetings be open to the public?
They would need to be.
Okay, great, thanks.
That was Vanessa's comment as well, I believe, so, I think, is that what everyone had in mind, was a short-term task force, not an ongoing advisory committee, right?
Well, the short term could be several years, but yeah.
As long as it takes them to come up with a five-year implementation strategy, right? Hopefully not five years. All right. I think we are settled on this, right? This last slide just has all the different questions that we were asked throughout the presentation, so we need to jump back to page, slide nine, also page nine in your packet. We had questions about the economic development grant programs that we didn't, didn't ever come to a conclusion on. So, this was your building facade and SDC BRAG grants. So, the question was just really whether you supported staff-recommended changes? And, yeah, Brian?
Yeah, I think I support the recommended changes. The only one that I wanted to bring up again was that one that, I think it was the BRAG/ SDC grant, where, you know, they can get a maximum of $50,000, and we only have $250,000 in there, so that basically means that, you know, potentially five businesses are going to get a really nice grant, and no one else is going to get anything. So, I personally would be in favor of, you know, reducing those amounts, I don't know by how much, by 50%, so then we could serve 10 businesses, which still isn't a lot, but, you know, I, I think it, that would still make the amount significant enough that it would make a big difference for those businesses, but it would spread it amongst more businesses.
Valerie, then Rick?
I think the SDC is automatically set at 25 max, isn't it? So, they only could use 25 matching for the SDCs.
They could, but then they can also add another 25 for brick qualification, and what Council de la Grange is saying is, is just have a cap of that program at 25, which would consist of potentially BRAG and system development charges.
Okay. Rick?
I am in favor of what Brian has stated. Thank you.
Joel says yes as well?
I'd like to see, I like the idea of a cap, I don't know, for me, not trying to be a fly in the ointment, but I would say 35 might help to push, tip the needle a little bit in some cases, make it a little more, more sweet for people, but that's, that's, I'd go with 35, but I'd settle for 25, but I think it should be a little more.
And I would agree with that, simply because of the cost of everything being so high, it has to be enough to do something, or else it's not going to be utilized, so I figure that a 35K would be enough to actually get something done, to move it forward.
Brian?
How about $31,500?
Kidding.
Suddenly feel like we're playing Price is Right, but, 35? Joel says 35's fine? You okay with 35? Vanessa's saying 35. Okay, so, yes, we do support the staff-recommended changes, but put a cap on, I guess that, it's the total, right? So, BRAG could be 35, or it could be 25 SDC with $10,000 BRAG, something like that.
Yeah, I think, from the spirit of it, we'd still cap SDC, they're only applying for SDC at 25, but the total grant awarded for that category could be up to 35 with BRAG included, or they could do a BRAG at up to 35.
Right, it's just 35, yeah, total. Okay. And then I think, yeah, there was another change in there, changing the, the schedule from being revolving, which does kind of make it a first-come, first-served, to being a competitive process? Was that one of the changes being proposed?
Yes, that was specifically on the building facade program. As far as the SDC BRAG program, that would be consolidated, like we talked about. The other thing we mentioned was the location criteria, and that would be to, you know, make sure that the location is outside of urban renewal, but within the city bounds. And I think was that the only...
Yeah, let's talk about that for a minute, because that was actually, thanks for reminding me, the reason why we put off this discussion was what, what in comparison is available through URA monies to the businesses that are inside the URA? Because we could either open this up to be, which maybe it already is, citywide, including the URA, or make it outside of the URA, right?
Yes, that's something you could decide. Right now, it currently covers all of the city. The reason why we would recommend going outside the URA is because we're looking at servicing the URA through the grant and loan programs that we're recommending today.
Okay, so your recommendation is to have it the areas that are outside the URA?
Outside the URA, yeah, that's what the current recommendation is, yeah.
Brad?
So, yeah, so they're not called that, but in the URA plan, if you look at the projects, there's, there's a building, blighted building, I think is one of them, and then there's, you know, a couple of others that you could, you could easily justify, somebody who comes in and say, I want to do a facade upgrade, or I want to do a security camera, or I wanted that, you know, so, the same amount, the same eligibility would be used, but we're using URA money for those businesses that come in, and we're, and we're, and we're using one of the existing URA projects, you know, to, to fund that through. So, it's just up to this point, given that we're spending down, you know, the other non-URA money, that's, we thought, well, that's, how do we preserve that for the, for the outside the URA? So, hopefully that clarifies.
So, the criteria, the projects would be the same, it's just the funding source that would be different?
Right, right.
Okay.
Right, so you would still, in the URA, building facade, you know, you'd have to meet the, the criteria that are in the handout that you have today, and it would still be So, the, in that respect, we're implementing the same program, we're just taking the resources from a different place.
Gotcha. Okay, everybody good with that? Sounds like we're good with that. Okay, does that get us through? Do you see any lingering questions there that we didn't make it through?
Um, let's see, maybe I can... Oh, that's what's in front of me. So, I guess, in this case, does the council, would they like to establish the urban renewal grant and loan program?
Yeah, was that our second present?
Yeah.
That was our second presentation? Okay, let me get back to that.
I had a question about that one, if I may. On slide 11, it talks about the funding rules, public infrastructure projects 50-50 match, and then privately owned improvement projects 25-75. I was just wondering which ones, who's the 25, and who's the 75 in that?
In this case, the privately owned, the private party would be investing 75%, and we would invest 25%.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead, Vanessa.
In this program, I would like to see under the application and approval process, rather than it being first-come, first-served, I would like it to be a score-based.
I guess, was the URA granted loan program, was that part of the second?
Yes.
Second chunk we dealt with? Okay, because I think, yeah, that's where council said they were interested in using a third-party servicing, is that the same? Okay, slide 15, right? Okay, so, I think they said yes to keeping both the loan program model available and the subsidized loan program model available, depending on, but needing some criteria, maybe to determine who would be potentially eligible for subsidized loan, and then using a third-party servicing?
And my question was on Vanessa, because application approval, first-come, first-served, open season, is that/or a project review committee? Or, I guess I'm, I'm asking for clarification on what you're, because you didn't want it first-come, first-served, you want it to be based in like a criteria and a point system, which would be that the urban renewal project review committee scoring and not, and have it like be once a year or something if they open it up? I just want clarity, clarity on that.
I don't know if it should be annually or quarterly, but the review committee sounds appropriate. I'm not certain of the timeline, though, I don't have a strong conviction there.
Okay. Yeah, and I guess I would just ask, because we don't know until we do it, what it's going to look like.
I, I saw it from a spirit perspective, we were recommending like sort of a first-come, first-served, open season, but we associate that also with review criteria and point scoring, so you could have something that comes in, but it scores really, really low, and it may not be something that may meet the criteria of associated funding opportunity.
And I think you're looking at annual, an annual application period?
I think we do annual, or, you know, twice a year, like our sustainable tourism grant, we could follow that same cycle.
It just seemed, yeah, it seems like the, twice a year, that way people aren't having to wait for an annual cycle. And I think on the smaller one, which was, what, building facade, what, what's the process for that one?
We were recommending going to a competitive model on that as well, same thing.
Okay.
And twice a year.
That'd be twice a year, and how is the lighting, the storefronts done?
Lighting the storefronts would probably continue to stay, it's a pretty small amount, and it's kind of pretty, we can approve it internally, so I think it's something that we would just probably continue.
Okay.
Open season.
That seems really reasonable to me, what about you, council? Okay, okay, I think we got all the questions answered there.
Okay.
Hopefully, come back to us if we didn't. Thank you for the...
They would think it was third-party management.
Joel? Yeah, that council had already agreed, third-party management.
Okay.
Rob?
Yeah, just, in the future, for the future, I'd just like to say that, one way or another, I think that the, the city needs to provide funding for the storefront camera and lighting, only because I can tell you for sure, anytime there's an incident in a store or out of, outside of a store, the first thing that the police always ask for is, do you have any, do you have any footage? Do you have any surveillance footage? It's the first thing they ask for, and it's, so it's something that really does help keep everyone safe, and it helps, long-term, keep criminals off the street. keep criminals off the street. So we need to find a way to make sure that that fund doesn't go dry, in my opinion.
What kind of utilization have we seen of that particular program in the last two or three years?
If I, just off the top of my head, I'd say probably maybe five to eight.
Yeah, so that one has twelve thousand five hundred available, and match people fifty percent, good opportunity. If anybody needs security lighting, huh? Or cameras.
So should we go back to the final? Ooh, I just slid it on.
Were you presenting more?
Shoot, let's see if I can just.
I think I think we made it through everything there, unless unless you see something that we missed.
On the second to last bullet, does the council support staff proceeding with market feasibility and exploratory partner discussions for a new RTC mixed-use project? I was reading into that, that you wanted the task force to take that on. I mean, that's that's how we're taking it forward unless, but I did want to clarify that before you moved on to your next.
That's the riverfront tourist district?
Right.
You want that to be included in the five-year?
Well, it's kind of confusing talking about a five-year, because a five-year plan is really not a long-term plan. A five-year plan is a short-term plan in the URA. So, yes, for the committee that I think was established, I think that was part of the question, part of the focus of thinking of it, that's why I was trying to separate out the pool and the plaza from the bigger picture, which is what that would entail.
Brian?
Yeah, no, I agree, I think that's, I think that's where we're at. I just wanted to also bring up one thing we didn't talk about, we we talked about the business incubator, and, you know, we came to the conclusion on that, but the the plaza project in is a very similar boat, you know, that's and staff kind of alluded to that, that that project is like, I guess, defunct at this point is one way of putting it, but we gave direction to take the resources and essentially move to reallocate the business incubator portion, although we haven't decided what to do with them yet. It makes sense to do the same with the plaza project, since the whole reason we were doing that is no longer even really happening. So I would just throw that to council.
You're inferring caveman plaza, not, I mean, when I think of plaza, that's the difference between the Owl parking lot.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Caveman Plaza is what you're talking about.
Yes, caveman plaza, thank you for clarifying, yeah.
Yeah, so how much funding is available in the town center plaza? It's project number twelve? One million?
The caveman plaza and the funding, you may want to, even with the the incubator, if since it looks like the direction is to have a task force, maybe leave the fundings just the way they are, provide for more broader opportunity for the task force to consider all the current and potential future funding. They may come back saying the caveman plaza is the best thing ever, or they may agree that it doesn't need to go any further, but.
It also sounds like we'll be carrying back fairly soon about some potential dollar amounts for the Owl Plaza? So maybe we could just kind of earmark that for a discussion when that topic comes around? Rob?
I mean, the originally, I think that the business incubator fund, it was essentially really just a placeholder, really. I think in two thousand sixteen, that council was just trying to basically fill up a, you know, a spreadsheet or a ledger of what what might we do with this money? But I'd rather see, certainly it renamed, and potentially the the caveman plaza thrown in with that, because I think anybody else looking at this list could be a little bit intimidated in saying, gee, this money's already allocated, it's already earmarked. Well, we kind of know that we've just identified two things that are essentially not earmarked and not allocated. So I'd like to have that be more clear moving forward, whether it's for a future council to look at, or whether it's for our our task force to look at, I think that they need to know clearly that, no, that that money is actually is is free to use for a good idea. So anyway, I'd like to see those renamed and essentially regrouped. I'm not sure we can come up with a a name for it, but I otherwise, like I say, a future council or someone else is going to think that it can't be touched.
Well, what we have, the budget category zero or something is the unallocated fund, so this could be a project zero? I don't know. Do you want to, do you want to say right now that it's available, or do you want to just leave it as is for a little bit? Obviously, we're going to have to have a whole other discussion about the subcommittee and the makeup of the subcommittee, and, you know, we can do that a different day, or we can hammer it out now. Vanessa?
Yeah, I'd like to make it really clear that those funds should be reallocated. I think both of those projects were vetted pretty deeply, and so I think we know that at this time they're a dead end, so I think that it opens up room for possibilities and maybe even helps with other ongoing projects.
Brian?
Yeah, I think if we have the ability to create a line item that essentially says unallocated resources, and we can use that as a tool as we're doing prioritizations and having projects like this come on and come off, I think it will give the subcommittee some leeway as far as, and a little bit of clarity, so they're not already tackling some of the stuff we did today.
What is the process, I guess, since this is the URA, and if we're, I think we have some specific process that we need to follow if we're going to create a separate fund? Brad, J C is putting it on you.
Mary, is your question, what's the process for the URA to create a separate one? Or are you talking about the council's question about?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I think we know that town center slash caveman plaza, one million dollars is not going to happen, right? So
Yeah.
in order to actually move it, is there an action required by the urban renewal agency?
Yeah, so the so the statute requires that the maximum indebtedness of one hundred and five million dollars is fully allocated. I mean, you you can't get by with just putting a big old chunk of of that maximum indebtedness into unallocated. You you do need to allocate the money under the under the ORS. To to the city manager's point, though, you know, you can just keep it there, we can make it super clear, we can highlight it, we can, you know, I mean, it'll be very evident that that's that in essence it remains open for for new allocation. But on the books, before we bring you a formal minor amendment to the plan, we we have to keep it allocated.
And do you know what the timeline is on Owl Plaza?
So the engineers are, you know, working towards the 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 final design on that, and then the cost estimate, you know, we we put on the slide March slash April, so certainly, and we
Two months.
Couple more, yeah.
So I guess, yeah, because it requires us to allocate it somewhere, I think we we all just kind of know that that's available, but we just need to wait and see what we want to do with Owl. If you are interested in reallocating that to Owl Plaza, or if you want to put it in the hands of the task force or the URA to determine a different slot to put it under, but it has to be somewhere, and it requires the URA to meet and vote, I think, rather than us doing this in a workshop. Does that sound about right?
Right.
Joel?
There was some work done by the task, the task force on the city plaza, like planting trees, and then there were there were about twenty different projects there, and some of them have value. I would say all of them probably have some value, and to just say that that's now totally unallocated, given that work, I would at least like to have the committee be exposed to that, to that work, because there's some things there that are worthwhile.
Rob?
I I don't see why we couldn't add another line to that with a total, whether it's four, point one, or whatever it is, identified as available for potential reallocation. And basically, that means somebody else looking at that in the future will know that that's a dollar figure that they, if they came up with a good use for it, it's it's potentially there, but identified as available for potential reallocation, and have that have that be our total figure.
I think, can you just explain the process again, please, Brad? Because this is the URA.
The process to
To reallocate, and whether or not we can just put something in a unallocated pot, like literally remove it from project twelve, one million dollars?
Yeah, I think we think of it as, you know, sort of the formal and informal processes. The formal process is is going to mean a, you know, a business meeting item where you actually have the plan before you to to change that. The informal process is, as councillor Pell referred to, you know, more of a working document that shows, okay, here's the unallocated amount. So, you know, we bring forward the resolution to create a task force, it's going to sort of outline what some of their 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 primary objectives are, and reviewing this would be one of those, and, you know, and as that, when that gets formed, we'll bring that informal working document in front of them. But it wouldn't be until, you know, you have the the formal business meeting where the change to the plan would actually occur.
Right, is everybody clear? Val?
Yeah, so it sounded just like what, just highlight those two, and when you tell the task force, those are things that we have, we have gone towards that have not been brought to fruition, so
Right.
you know, keep that in mind, I think that would be plenty.
Yes.
Yeah, just to add to that, it sounds like there could be a quarterly financial report that could add to this discussion on a quarterly basis, that would show the current amended plan, and maybe asterisk or note some of these areas, as well as the areas that we are already have spent out of, so you kind of know what that balance may be.
Okay. Any other thing, questions, topics on this subject? No? Okay.
I do, I do, sorry.
Okay, go ahead, J C.
Because I wasn't clear on question four, if we were going with the slide of the potential recommended fiscal year twenty-five budget.
I prefer to target. Okay, what let's bump down to the appropriate slide here, I'm looking in my sheet. Does anybody know what slide that was on? There was kind of an outline.
May I ask a question while this is going on?
Sure.
So J C, the problem I have with this, I see a wish list, and I see what's designated and so forth, and a lot of the projects are on the runway, but they haven't taken off yet, so and again, the council has discretion as time goes on to say we like that project today and tomorrow we don't. So what what do you need from us when we look at these figures?
That's a good question, because the URA does have a different budgetary appropriation level than the city, and so when we're giving money to the pool, that is more or less a transfer and deemed a special payment out, whereas something like the grants and that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's more of an expenditure out of the URA. So budgetarily, it's classified two different ways. Now, we can bring something forward to you that's flexible as possible, but I think for just at a minimum, showing that two hundred and fifty thousand in some area as an expense that the URA can make, and the other housing and loans program, that could either be a a project contribution, or that could be an expense as well. I'm just kind of looking for what your guys' temperament is as far as where you would like us to kind of start that plan, as we'll be back here in a little bit for the URA budget.
So in response to that, I guess I would like to see if we're going forward with this committee to look at the five-year plan, for them to have the opportunity to look at those figures, but again, I want, I see, I want to give you what you need now as well in answers. Thank you.
I'm just kind of trying to interpret back, so basically what you're saying, which I I think in our discussion today, we all were open to the housing and the loans, and we know housing is like like the number one priority, priority, so I I would say, yes, keep those there and the grants, because that's also part of what can be happening. So it's my understanding that those are pretty well sealed up today, that that those are expenditures that we're kind of expecting, and, you know, caveman pool is kind of one of those things that we'll have to have a completely different discussion about here soon. But I would say that right now, with exception of knowing where we're going with caveman, everything else looks pretty darn secure in there, from my perspective, based upon today's discussion.
Brian?
Yeah, as I recall in years past, we've basically been given maximum flexibility for URA. I think as much as we're able to do that in this year's budget, I think we'd probably like to see that. So like, I guess, for example, for caveman pool, I don't know that we need to allocate that in this year's budget, but I probably would allocate whatever amount we are anticipating for the phase-two design in this year's budget, which is a much smaller amount, I think it's one hundred and fifty some thousand, something like that. So I would probably allocate that and then put the rest in a more flexible bucket, if possible.
J C, is there a reason why you're asking for this the the way that it is?
Yeah, so it's a little difficult to explain on the fly, but one is more like a a transfer out of the URA, which would be the caveman pool, because that is the city's asset. The other way, the loans, housing and grants, that's more of an expenditure to the URA, because it's not going to be city-owned at the end of the at the end of the day. So the maximum flexibility, if you still wanted to move forward and keep that five million dollars as pegged for the caveman pool, we can do that. And again, we can always move it later, I was just trying to make sure that we didn't pigeonhole ourselves budgetarily from the start.
So, for instance, like that the grants that are two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and the grant programs that we talked about today, budgetarily, J C and economic development would sort of budget for that two fifty to be there, and for new fiscal year, we would continue to promote the grant programs with the two hundred and fifty as potential of granting allocable resources. So that just helps provide that guidance for us on whether or not that's something that we should be putting in the budget.
So on Owl Lot Plaza, where it says to date expenses only, what is, what's the one hundred and sixty-three dollars paying for, something that's already occurred, or something that we're budgeting to happen in the next fiscal?
Adding the one sixty-three would bring it back up to the five hundred thousand, so there is some allocated currently, that it's three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, it would just continue to keep that fund at the five hundred thousand for FY twenty-five.
So it's transferring one sixty-three from URA to the city budget, just to keep that budget line at half a million?
Yes.
Okay. And caveman pool would be allocating five million from URA, transferring it, the the actual cash now into the city budget, so we actually have five million dollars to spend on the pool, but we don't?
That would be the the maximum flexibility to start with, yeah.
And how does that help us beyond just keeping it in the URA for now, and then transferring it when council makes the decision to move forward with the pool?
Generically, it's just cost of doing the budget adjustment, so we have to notice it and put it in the paper, if there's administrative costs of moving those dollars around.
Okay, and there isn't any money just sitting in the in the city budget right now to pay for some pool expenses like the phase-two design? There is. Okay, so this would help us at less expense get the pool going more quickly without making a budget adjustment, except that we do need to determine how we're going to fund the other half of the pool, right? Okay. Well, I guess with that, does council have any other questions about slide thirty-one? Do you want them to budget in this way? Do you want them to budget in this way, or do you want to make a change?
I'm okay with the way it is.
I have a question about the Owl Plaza again. So, do we think that it might come in under $500,000?
The construction?
Yeah.
Absolutely not.
In that case, and since it's being designed pretty readily, I mean, does it, you know, are we going to have to go through some sort of budget adjustment if they were to, say, move some of the URA funds over to that line and then transfer it to the city budget? We would have to go through two steps of movement there?
So, no. So, just because you've allocated the $5 million, you have that availability to be a different project. It just allows for that transfer to happen to the city?
Oh, I meant for Owl Lot, for the Owl Plaza?
Correct. They'd be one and the same, as far as how it comes across budgetary. I know it's lined out like this, but as far as an appropriation level, it kind of gets mixed together.
I'm just trying to figure out how it's different than caveman pool. If, let's say, it's going to cost $1.5 million, right? And this is going to bring us up to half a million, but we need to come up with another million.
Yeah, so in theory, you have the $5 million to caveman pool and you don't have to spend it. And so, you could use part of that transfer authority to give it to the Owl Plaza?
No, I didn't mean to take money from the pool for the plaza, but that's okay. I think I've got it figured out. All right. Any other questions? All right. I'm still not sure. Are you okay with leaving as is for the budget? So, that... Brian?
I mean, it just, it sounds like one way or another, we're just going to be making an adjustment later, so I'm fine with it.
Does it lock in once that transfer's made from URA to caveman pool? It can go back? It could be spent on something entirely different some other time?
Yeah, I think the conversation, we need to progress before we transfer money out of the URA to the city. So, this is just a placeholder that is not overspending those dollars.
Okay. All right. Well, I think we're okay with leaving it as is. Anything else on this topic? DJ left us. I think Dwayne's still out there. Okay. Next up, we have Riverside Caretaker Cottage.
Okay. Council has seen this one before. This is a follow-up workshop discussion on the rebuilding/Caretakers Cottage in Riverside Park, continuing a discussion from July 23, where you received a motion from the HBSC regarding the preservation of the building. There's two particular goals that relate to your council strategic plan there. So, here's the location of the cottage. As you know, it fronts on Park Street, at the entrance to the main shop building for parks there. Again, I'll just have a couple of refresher slides for you today. This is the... This building is built in 1920. It was originally used as part of the caretaker's residence, or as the caretaker's residence for the park. And by the '70s, it was first converted to use as park offices and then a museum. At their July 13 meeting, HBSC made the motion... There was actually two motions related to this building. The first one, made by Chair Warren, seconded, or that the house be recognized as a local historic landmark. So, right now, the entire park is on the National Register, but there has never been any local action related to this house in terms of a local landmark. And then the second HBSC motion had to do with the repair and maintenance of this facility. Council then reviewed those motions in July 31. On August 17, you participated, some of you, in a tour of the house. That was triggered by that July 31 discussion. You wanted both a little bit more public input and then you wanted yourselves to be able to have the chance to see it firsthand. We also did a survey... Well, I'm sorry, I skipped over. October 30, we hosted that public open house. There was about 12 residents that walked through the building. And then, October 27, we did publish the survey that gave folks the option to sort of give their ideas and preferences. We had a pretty good response on that. 216 people completed the survey online. This is what that looked like. 54 voted for the demolition and 162 voted to save it. And then there was a variety of input on what would be, if you saved it, what would be the use. And most of those were listed as options in the survey, but some of those people, you know, kind of brought back and just in the narrative part. So, you can see about a quarter of the folks think some kind of museum or history center. And then, police and security was another kind of high-ranking item, along with no suggestion. And then some kind of rentable space got 15%. So, I'll quickly go through these. You've seen it. This is the existing structure from the exterior. And then, interior, here are some of the existing conditions. There are several visible issues with the building. The main thing, in terms of moving ahead, if you... There are a few things to consider in terms of moving ahead. Since it is on the National Register of Historic Places, it triggers this ORS 358.653, which is a city-owned and it's a historic structure. It does require before any major work or demolition that there be, you know, a demonstrated evidence that you as... That we as a city have found an alternative use or tried to find another user or something along those lines. This ORS just kind of states that. So, bottom line, you can't just say today, go out and demolish it and tomorrow we do that. There is a process that needs to take place. These are some of the expected conditions I showed on the earlier slides. Lead mediation, asbestos, dry rot, some foundation issues. In terms of whether you decide to preserve or demolish, some key factors to consider. Either significant rehab or demo does require that public hearing before the HBSC, as I mentioned. Hazardous material survey and abatement would need to take place. The question about complete versus a partial removal. In the numbers that I'll give you, we actually looked at both of those. Some grading work would likely need to happen. And then relocating electrical service and sewer and water abandonment. Obviously, that's really only if you went with a full demolition. So, given the response from the community, we, you know, we did look at, okay, well, what if you remodeled it versus new construction? Remodel, you really are still looking at probably an entire removal of the roof and then putting a foundation under it. That $150,000 cost estimate is doing those things as well as just kind of some cosmetic. So, it's not, you know, it's going to look a lot like it does, but it's going to... I mean, other than the roof, which has that nice moss, you know, forest on it in the backside there. But, you know, so 150, $10,000 of asbestos, yeah, that's today's dollars. If we did this in a year, you know, obviously, there's going to be inflation needs to add and increase those costs. New construction, that would look more like, you know, taking it all the way down, grade level, and then rebuilding something that looked very similar on it. We used a similar square footage. We... About 1,000-square-foot building that would be rebuilt there. So, those are some of the numbers. We have not, under this current fiscal year budget, budgeted anything for that. Now, speaking of URA, you know, Riverside Park is a URA project. I think there's a little over a million as a URA project for Riverside. So, you know, that's, again, something for the task force to kind of potentially look at or you. But that... Those dollars, other than a little bit of repair money that could potentially come out of our park's LB 6179, which is our maintenance and repair, but it would not be sufficient to cover these costs.
Before you go on, just from a cost perspective on that, I just want to provide a caveat that these are numbers that we received from staff with regards to what we thought the cost estimates would be. But the caveat is, the Welcome Center, which is similar in size and nature and scope, without foundation issues, is costing us $650,000. So, I... Those numbers, please utilize those. Don't utilize those numbers as your policy decision-making thing, because I don't... I would not fully trust the reliability of those numbers for you to make an informed policy decision if that was your one biggest decision factor. If price is your decision factor for making this policy decision, I would like to have additional time and get a true estimate for you. If there's other issues with regards to policy decisions on whether to keep this building or not keep this building, when it comes to the building versus the potential use as for us to utilize for a... To better our park station there, that's a different story. Price would be secondary. I'm more comfortable with that figure. So, that was just the caveat I wanted to put out.
Thank you. And Dwayne's online and he needs to leave us, but he wants to touch on that point. So, go ahead, Dwayne.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Aaron, because you are hitting my point. I've done these remodels and this is probably one of the worst ones I'm going to see, but the seal and the floor joists and electrical and roof, this is going to be a total new building. I don't care what you do to this thing. It's going to cost you... There's no way it's going to be $150,000. And it will never be, look the same type of building again. It will basically be a brand-new building. So, and you've got to remember, we're going to pay prevailing wages, not a contractor. It's going to be over $50,000. So, these estimates, I would never even trust these estimates at all. I've done 1,300-square-foot home that we took the flooring up, stripped the walls, new electrical, plumbing, and you're $200,000 into the thing. So, I'm not going to... Guess I won't be around to vote, but this will be not the same building. It will be basically a brand-new building. It will never look the same. Just my thoughts. Thank you.
Thanks, Dwayne. Before you go, did you want to weigh in an opinion on whether you thought we should do the remodels or do something else with this building?
This is hard. I know there's people who've got emotional attachments to this building historically. I'm going to say I'm kind of against their historical attachments, because looking at it, it doesn't really have any historical look to me, but I'm not a historical person. I think this is a money pit personally. That's just my thing, and I wouldn't keep it, but I'm only one vote, and that's just where I'm standing. I think it needs to be tore down, but I will go with the majority here in what they decide. Thank you.
Thank you. That'll help us as we wrap up the discussion. I think... Do you have a question for Brad? Okay, because we weren't quite done with the presentation yet, but I know Dwayne had to leave. You can go next. Why don't you finish up, Brad, and then we'll move into discussion?
Yeah, we're pretty much there. All very, very good points. In terms of the budget that we have, $385,456 is the cash balance, and that'll be $6395. As I mentioned, the URA has the $1.7 million. And then, there is that $254,000 on that Isaac Walton, the former community center, but that, again, according to former council discussions, prior council discussions, you had talked about allocating all of that to the stage. So, at this point, we were assuming that $254,000 was not going to be available. Yeah, so, you know, certainly our job is to present to you the options. HBSC motion, they were unanimous in their motion to recommend, you know, some kind of preservation. So, depending on what your direction is today, we'll either proceed with, you know, some other partnerships. There could be an opportunity there for public-private partnership in terms of, you know, how... Where some funding comes from, as well as the new use. So, those discussions could take place. Or if you decided to demolish, we would prepare an application to take to the HBSC for their consideration on that.
Thanks, Brad. Rick Vingeal?
I like to do remodels in my house, and I like to preserve things when they can be preserved. But I was also part of the tour of the building. It is an absolute disaster, and I would be in favor, as Dwayne says, of demolition. And the other thing I think that needs to be taken into consideration, handicapped and other building code standards, depending on the use of the building. And I just see the cost just going through the roof, so I would be in favor of demolition. Thank you.
Joel?
So, I'm the liaison to the commission. And they had a unanimous vote on that. And so, why would you do that? That's a good question. Why would you do that? The other thing I have that affects my bias is I was responsible for Union Creek Historic District. It had buildings just as old and just as bad a shape. Becky's Cafe, you remember Becky's Cafe? I don't know if you've ever eaten there? Have you ever gone into the bathroom there? And, yeah, and then you go and you see the old gas station with the pumps across the street, and you've got all those little buildings that are bunks in them that people can rent now. It's not the only one. You've got the Oregon Caves and their whole slew of buildings up there. And it did take money to restore that. Crater Lake Lodge, same way. You also have the house over on the Illinois River, the Port Orford Cedar Bark House, that was built back in the '30s. And we had a caretaker. He was really needed for law enforcement down there. I didn't want his job, but he loved it. And we invested money in that to maintain that. And then you have Ferris Ford over at Powers Ranger District that was built by Ginger's... I don't know, was it his grandfather, her grandfather or her father? Great structures. So, the one thing that strikes me is today, you look at it and you got, unfortunately, people that are down on their luck, and there's some drug use, and there's some other things going on fairly close to the building. And I would like to see a paradigm shift. So, what does a paradigm shift look like? You look at a picture and you see something different in it than what is there. From this angle, you see it this way. From this angle, the picture changes, and it's the same picture. And so, at our previous discussion, we talked about... Brad, you talked about... What did you call that district down by the river?
The riverfront tourism commercial district?
Yes. And what does that look like 10 years from now? And how do our parks, when they get returned to the city for use as recreation, look like in that paradigm shift? For a relatively small amount of dollars, it's still expensive. I mean, Becky's Cafe wasn't cheap. Port Orford Cedar building wasn't cheap. You could have a coffee shop, snack shop, and a historic building with historic photographs. And whether that's a reconstruction or a construction, I think that would be an economic decision. And it would fit in extremely well with the attraction of the river and the future economic development of Grants Pass. For nothing else, then people would go for a walk, they'd go down to the park, they'd... Kids would go in and have a popsicle. You'd have a cup of coffee or whatever. kids would go in and have a popsicle, you'd have a cup of coffee or whatever. And it wouldn't have to limit the expansion of that maintenance yard next door. There's places where that can expand. So, I feel obligated as, as my member, as a council member, to lobby for that, and I'll be voting to either remodel it or replace it in kind, whatever's cheapest, as an economic development for as part of, part of that riverfrontage and, and economic zone for Grants Pass. And we need a paradigm shift. There's no doubt about that. We need a paradigm shift.
Vanessa, then Rick.
Kind of going backwards here, I have a question. On the survey, was it clear to the survey participants, the deep structural issues with the building and also the possibility of asbestos and lead? When they took that survey and provided those answers, were those things clear to them, or was it just, should we preserve this historic structure?
I, I would say the latter.
Okay. Thank you. Rick.
Further elaboration, on the demolition of the site, it would be real easy to put in a pad for a food trailer, and that would be a dynamic change in provide activity as well as food for that area and bring people in, and yet would be minimal cost. Thank you.
Valerie.
Yeah, there's been a lot of changes in Riverside Park just through the years. I mean, since I've been on the counselor, council, we put in the, the shades in the area for boat neck. You know, at one point in time, that was a bandshell that, you know, a lot of people have talked about, and, you know, how great it was. Isaac Walton Park, Isaac Walton Building, my daughter took dance lessons in there, and so I spent time there. And to me, that was much more historic in terms of memory and the looks of it than the building at the top part of the park. So I am not opposed to putting, having someplace there where pictures and things like that, and the history of the park is, is brought to, to, to talk about in pictures, because I think it is historic, and I think it would be wonderful to put, have some sort of memory lane and, you know, whatever, but I, I just don't think that building is really worth all, you know, and looking at what, it's just dilapidated. I mean, you know, one of the floors is just totally, you know, sideways in terms of hidden balance. So there's so much that would have to be done to that building, and I don't think it remarkably stands out as anything. I, I, I look at the need for maintenance. I know that down at Riverside, I mean, not Riverside, the park where they, the, where they have the current maintenance building, that area is not very large, and I could see why we need more. So I'm kind of like Rick, I, I think something should be done somewhere in that park. We've allocated money at this point to put in, to keep concerts in the park, to put some sort of a bandshell and concert venue down there, and I think as we do that, we should put some sort of kiosk or something to tell, to do, to talk about the history. But I personally, myself, do not see that building as having that particular, the place to do it, because I just, I don't think that there's that much history in that one spot.
Brian.
I'm inclined to agree with the H B S C and what Joel has elaborated on. I think that, you know, first of all, it is technically on the historic register now, so that presents some complexities if we did decide to remove it. And I know that those numbers that were presented are not real numbers, but I think, from what I've heard from, and I think we've all heard, we got a couple emails from H B S C members saying that there are opportunities to potentially fund some of that renovation with state grants, federal grants. There's lots of opportunities for that to bring down the cost. And so I'm inclined to explore that, not even necessarily knowing the final use for that building yet, because I think there are a few good potential uses for that, whether it's, you know, a cafe or a museum or public safety space or city office space, or, or, you know, there's a few different potentially good ideas for that. So, I guess that's, that's where I'm at.
Rob.
Yeah, I'd like to comment on a few things that were said today. First, I just, I don't know, I feel the need to say this first, but it, it's really mind-boggling to me that any city building could have, could have degenerated to such a dilapidated state, and how ironic is it that it's next to a maintenance office in our park? I mean, I had a, a house that generated a reasonable amount of moss on the north side of the roof, and I had to put up a zinc strip near the top of the, the, the peak, and every once in a while, every ten years or so, I had to spray it with something and remove a little moss. Now, clearly, not even the most minimal attention was given to that building. How in the world, next to a maintenance center, did, do we as a city allow that to happen? That's just, that's pathetic, in my opinion. But, in other words, it never should have gotten to this, to this point minimally. Like I say, it takes very, very little to keep moss off a roof long-term with either zinc or spray or whatever. But, and to answer Vanessa's question, with regards to the survey, the, the ballpark cost that council has seen was also seen on that survey. We probably all know that they may not be within a factor of three or four hundred of being accurate, but people did get the figures that were presented to us as well, and so those results were based on that. The other thing that, I also have to correct something that Duane said. He may be totally accurate with regards to, you know, what it would take to remodel that or rebuild it or whatever, but as far as it never looking the same, he's completely wrong. I mean, if you want to look up on Lawn Ridge, on the west side of Lawn Ridge, up near Midland, there are two homes, one, they would actually be called neo-traditional, and one of them was essentially a total teardown. I think they kept up, I think they kept the, the fireplace in one wall so they wouldn't get dinged for S D Cs a certain way or whatever. But they completely rebuilt that building, and it looks, and I've been inside, because I, I've, I've actually talked to the owner, it's, it looks like any building in that neighborhood that would have been built in nineteen thirty's or nineteen forty's. They went out of their way to do it. I mean, what's really exceptional about it is that the rooms are large, like modern homes have. They're not small rooms, but the outside looks incredible, and it look, and it fits the neighborhood perfectly. And then you have the garage, it's two doors up from there, where the garage was built about five years ago now, completely separate from the house and fits in perfectly with the architecture of the house. So, so that, you know, to rebuild that building, to say that it's never going to look the same is, is just not right, because then there's two examples that would prove my point. So it can be done. But the other thing that, the thing that I immediately default to, and it's, it's alluded to in these, in this presentation, is it took, and, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, Brad, but it took probably ten years for the Historic Building Sites Commission, along with city staff, to finally get certification as a C L G certified local government. That was, and, and I know for a fact, because I, I was two terms on that, and my first time around, we were, we were working on that probably in two thousand and six or so, and we recently, you know, not just a few years ago, got it. So, the certified local government, one of the biggest selling points, one of the reasons that we went ahead and did it, was supposedly there were grants potentially available for historic issues. Now, I would not want to move forward with this, either tearing it down or committing to rebuild it for who knows how many hundreds of thousands, without knowing. I don't know if we have a grant writer right now. I know we had one who left, and I don't know if we have one, but we need to know what, this, this seems to be like the poster child for, for historic preservation dollars, I would think. And for us not to know that before we make a decision, I think would really be a mistake. We need to know if, if we qualify for, whether it's state or federal, federal funding, and it may be that it's right there available to us. So we need to find that out. And I have a question for Brad. On the Riverside U R A money, the one point seven million, what was, what was that essentially thought to be used for? What was, what was the vision?
Well, I wasn't here in twenty sixteen when the U R A plan was created or adopted, so I wouldn't be able to tell you. I don't know if Aaron remembers or Jason, but it's, it has been since the beginning a, a distinct discreet line item for Riverside in there. You know, I think there's always been some understanding. I mean, it's a, it's a big park, it's regional, and, you know, it's going to have continual needs, but to my knowledge, I, I haven't seen any, like a specific project called out in Riverside Park for U R A dollars.
Yeah. I guess, you know, with that said, if we had to come up with, you know, a half a million dollars or more to essentially either remodel or rebuild that, you know, I would have to really think long and hard, but to essentially quickly dismiss it as a teardown without knowing kind of what kinds, what kind of plans we might have for the U R A one point seven million dollars there, not to say that couldn't be reallocated like we've done with other things today, but I'd also like to know about potentially C L G grant money, because it seems as though that's, the, the primary reason we went ahead and spent all that staff time to create a C L G was for this kind of grant. So I'd want to know if that's, that's available. And, and then what actually are, would we be looking at as far as cost go? But to say today to tear it down without knowing those, the answer to those questions, I couldn't do it.
Rick.
Also, I see, as we look at urban renewal funds, we have a housing situation, and I would like to think we could find a solution for downtown and the second-story residences, rather than spending a half a million dollars on something only a few people visit. Thank you.
Joel.
Well, one of the things that goes through my mind, first off, is it a half a million dollars? You know, that, that wouldn't be one decision if it's not, and if we got grants, that would be a different decision. We don't know that. The other thing is, Grants Pass is lacking an industrial base. When you look at what Brad presented in terms of urban renewal and, and recreation along the river and tourism and business associated with that, that, that is a viable option. And this would fit in very well with that, if the price is right. And I think we need to find that out.
Rob.
Yeah, I think what Joel said earlier, talked about a paradigm shift, you know, I really have to question when Rick says, you know, a building that only a few people visit. I mean, that's true today. We're hoping that that park is teeming with happy locals and tourists in the near future. That's what we're hoping. And I don't want to sell that hope short until, unless we fail at all those attempts. But hopefully, that's, that's brought back to just a wonderful place to be, and, you know, and then at that point, that building could have some real impacts as far as what it could be commercially and otherwise, whether the city ran it or whether the city leased it. Right now, I think any business owner would be out of their mind to even agree to lease that for a dollar a year, because, you know, who would invest a dollar a year? And I wouldn't. But hopefully, it's going to be back to its past glory and beyond. So I'm hoping that a lot more than a few people visit it, and it could potentially be really valuable again.
Sounds like we have a pretty split council on this, so I think we're going to have to take it to maybe a business meeting where we get some input and, and make a more formal decision. I'm wondering what is involved in getting a better estimate about repairs and also just kind of a, a general outlook at what types of grant funding might be available to help.
Well, on your first question, that's simply, you know, a matter of getting three bids from different contractors, but we need to give them a specific idea, and we had talked to a couple of them about that thousand square foot at a very similar type of layout as what's in there now. So we would just go to those three and, and, you know, get a, a more updated number. On your last one, you know, grant writing does take a lot of time, and so we didn't want to put a lot of time and energy into that until we got direction from the council to know, you know, whether you do want to preserve it. We can certainly do some high-level exploration about, as Councilor Pell said, on the C L G side, as well as other private foundations who have historic preservation money, and just to see what kind of projects are eligible. That, that, that would not be too difficult to do.
I think that would be helpful, just to give a, a rough idea of what, you know, can you get fifty thousand? Can you get five hundred thousand? How realistic it might be to, to get anything.
Yeah, yeah, we can give you what's out there. We can't give you the, you know, the prognosticating part of it. I mean, some of those have lots of competition, and so we never know, but, yeah.
Rick.
Would those bids also include a thousand square foot brand-new structure that would meet our needs for a museum or some other use?
Well, the, you know, the use is, is tough. I mean, if you're a contractor and you're asked to design a, you know, a cost, get a, to prepare a cost estimate for a, a small cafe, it's going to come back probably pretty different than a very open floor plan, you know, type museum layout. I mean, that, it does factor in. I think we can, we can, but we can work with them. We'll, I think, get any sense for where the council's at.
So part of my question also is that the existing layout, I think, is basically unusable, so it'd take a major modification? So I guess I would want to make sure that if we're going out for a bid, we're just not trying to put new sheet rock over the old sheet rock and, and stay with existing layout.
Sure.
Thank you.
I think the question, you know, before the council is whether to preserve that building, right? Because if we were going to totally tear it down and build a new building, you might want to do it in a totally different spot in the park, or you might want to do it in a purpose-built way. So this question is about this building, but unfortunately, I heard, you know, three people speak one way and three people speak the other way, and two people are no longer in the meeting here, so it's, it's hard to know what to do, but I think if you could provide an update with some more details, and if there's anybody in the community who wants to make a proposal for how this building actually should be used, that's not just completely ambiguous, you know, I mean, I know some people have said it could be used for a museum. Does anybody actually want to run a museum there, I think is a really big question, you know? Does anybody have operating funds for a museum? Because we have a lot of different priorities for building projects, and, you know, both the Shelter and the Hillcrest Fire Station come to mind, that if we were going to sink half a million dollars into a building, would it be this building? But let's put it on a meeting agenda, and we'll vote on it and decide.
Thank you. Will do.
Thank you. Anything else on that topic? All right, we have a quick agenda review here. Our business meeting will be next Wednesday night. We have a couple of awards at the beginning. We have a public hearing on an ordinance to consider a special use permit for on-track supportive housing. We have a public hearing on an ordinance regarding the P U D reimbursement district, and we have council action items that would adopt the public safety utility fee, possible food and beverage tax, a amendment to the comprehensive fee schedule, a resolution approving Mark Bartholomew coming back as a, a temporary city attorney, and a motion that would acknowledge the monthly and quarterly financial reports. Any changes, questions about that meeting, Valerie?
Well, I, I, we also have the ordinance for humanitarian services, and I guess I was referring, is that the same copy of the one that you originally put out? It's just come, is it the same one that we have a copy of?
Actually, I have a, I have an updated version to send you. Not very many changes, but I, I'll send it out.
Thanks. Sorry I skipped that. That's the services in the parks, I would assume? Okay. And then our next workshop is March fourth, and it looks like we have And then our next workshop is March 4th and it looks like we have a pretty light agenda right now. We were saving that initially in case we needed to deal with more public safety issues, but it looks like we have a gap there, so we'll get something on the agenda. Valerie?
I was just, I'm going to suggest, and maybe this isn't a suggestion, maybe we're not ready for it, but I do think that we need to have a pool discussion of some sort or other. I do.
I agree. Both the pool and it seems like the Owl Lot Plaza, as soon as staff is ready with info to present, we can move forward on those. Have to take a look at what we have piling up on the back here and get some decisions Anything else? No? Who wants to do the honors of adjourning today, huh? Valerie?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Seconded by Rick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. See you next Wednesday.